Councilmember Berman.
Here.
Councilmember Burt.
Here.
Councilmember DuBois.
Here.
Councilmember Philseth.
Here.
Mayor Holman. Councilmember Niss. Councilmember Scharf.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Wobach.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you and good evening to everyone. The first order of business on the council is the most important part of the meeting. It's oral communications, the right for anyone to stand up and to talk to the council about something that is not on our agenda. I have three speaker cards and I'd like them to come up to the front and have three minutes. First speaker is Nancy Crop.
Hi, good evenings, Pollo Alto City Council. I'm Nancy Crop and I'm the Director of Legislation for the Sixth District PTA which includes all of Santa Clara County plus three other counties. I am also here tonight on behalf of the Palo Alto PTA councils which represent all seventeen schools in the Pollo Alto School District. And finally, I'm here tonight as a school district parent and a resident of the Barron Park neighborhood who's fortunate enough to live in the same neighborhood as the Buena Vista Mobile Home Park. I just have to take a minute. The PTA community, we lost a child this morning and our hearts go out to that family and to their loved ones and their friends who are all suffering this loss. I just needed to recognize that. And yet, PTA believes it's so critical and so important to be here tonight on behalf of all of our students who are impacted by the Buena Vista issue in our community. And we are here tonight to urge you to approve the city manager's recommendation to release $8 million towards the preservation of the Buena Vista Mobile Home Park and to do that at your earliest opportunity. When we talk about why is PTA involved in this issue, why does PTA care, we talk about numbers. We talk about 100 children, 100 of our students living in the Buena Vista Mobile Home Park. We talk about one out of every eight students at the Barron Park Elementary School facing losing their homes, but what's behind those numbers is a child. A child who has dreams of a future, a child who has hopes for tomorrow, a child who believes that adults can fix things, a child who believes in you. I was here when a five-year-old from Barron Park Elementary came up to this mic and asked you to please save her home and she got a standing room ovation from this entire room. I was here when a 14-year-old freshman from Gunn High School said, "I want to be President of the United States and I think it's critical that I've gone high school on my resume so I can be President of the United States." We are here, PTA is here for the children, every number is a child, and I would like all the children in this room to please now stand up because we are here for you today. And now, every adult, every adult who is here requesting the city council to set aside $8 million for the purchase of the Buena Vista Mobile Home Park, please stand up with these children. PTA is the largest and oldest advocacy organization on behalf of children in the state of California. We are so proud to be here today with all our students and their families and we know that you, members of the city council, will be equally proud when you vote to approve $8 million for the purchase of the Buena Vista Mobile Home Park land. Thank you.
If we could keep demonstrations down, it'll allow us to hear more effectively from the people. Second speaker is Erica Escalante.
Good evening, my name is Erica Escalante. I'm the president of the Buena Vista Mobile Home Park Residents Association. I am here tonight not only as the president of the association, but as a longtime resident of Buena Vista, moving there when I was about 14-years-old, a former student of JLS, graduate of Gunn High, and now a parent of Andre, who's here, a third grader at Barron Park Elementary. Buena Vista has been such an important part of my life. It's where I grew up, where I had the opportunity to get the best education possible and the reason my parents were able to afford to send their children to college, the first in our family's history. Other children who grow up at Buena Vista are doing the same. Buena Vista is an affordable and safe place to live and to raise our children. I want my son and all the children at Buena Vista to have the same access to education and opportunities I've had. Buena Vista residents are an important part of Palo Alto and the support we have gotten reflects that. Many of us work in Palo Alto and Stanford, providing essential services to the community. And I would like to thank everyone on behalf of the Residents Association for being here tonight and showing your support for us and for affordable housing. I would also like to thank you, thank the city manager, I'm sorry, thank the city for what it has done for Buena Vista and the city manager for matching the county's funds and encouraged the city council to release those funds as soon as they're appropriate. We hope to be here for years to come and continue to participate as residents, students, taxpayers, and workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Our third speaker is Lisa Kinkel.
Good evening, my name is Lisa Kinkel. I'm a resident of Palo Alto, I'm also on the board of the Law Foundation of Silicon Valley. I am here standing proudly with the homeowners of the Buena Vista Mobile Home Park. When I was growing up, my family benefited from affordable housing. When my parents divorced and my mother went back to school to re-qualify to resume her teaching career, and the fact that my community had affordable housing enabled us to stay in our neighborhood, stay in our schools, get the support of our friends during a really critical time. We have an opportunity here for a win-win solution to keep these families in their homes, to keep these kids in the best schools in the country. Thank you to the city manager for setting aside the $8 million. I was very proud to see that when it was reported and I urge the city council to ratify that decision at the earliest opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you for each one of the speakers to come out and share your perspective and your point of view and to each member in the audience, most important thing you can do is come out and express your viewpoint in a public forum before the city council about where we're going and what you want to do. So each one of you deserves our grateful thanks for coming. Please. As many of you know, we have a closure application and appeal coming to the council and we will have that hearing on April 13th and 14th. The council has an obligation to remain neutral, fair, and open-minded during that appeal. And only after then can the city really partake in questions of where we're going. So again, I want to thank each one of you for coming and expressing your opinion tonight. Yeah, members of the Human Relations Commission, please join us.
Do you know if we want to make like a quick announcement, how do we do that?
You do that through oral communications and you get a card in the back and it'll be after these two study sessions. So the council, it's going to be at least two hours before the council starts. I'm sorry, but there are the clerks, I would speak to them, they are the meetings.
Hi, so we just wanted to make a quick announcement.
Yeah, members of the Human Relations Commission are here. If you would come up to the podium. Welcome. Good to see you.
Hi. How are you doing?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Didn't expect to see 200 people here for your meeting.
I thought they were showing up for the joint session. Mika told me to keep it short and sweet, so I just got my quick talk and points.
This is my thing, I revise it a lot of times.
Good.
And I have some facts, you can give your opinion.
Perfect. That was shocking. Impressive, you guys got through that so quick.
Who's going to speak for the commission?
I'd imagine Jill, the chair will, I think, open up and then we're going to move to individual commissioners on various projects.
Okay, just wanted to make sure who opened.
Get it done, see you guys, get home a little early.
Okay, I think we are set to move to item number one on the agenda, which is a joint session with the Human Relations Commission. Would the chair of the commission like to open? Oh, I'm sorry, first we need the roll call.
Commissioner Al Hasani. Commissioner Bicchetti. Commissioner Chen.
Here.
Commissioner Marin. Commissioner Onan.
Here.
Commissioner Savage. Commissioner Stone.
Here.
Six present.
Thank you. Now if the chair would like to open.
Thank you and good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for having us for our annual study session with you. I know we have some new councilmembers here tonight, so we're going to introduce ourselves as a commission, explain some of the things that we've accomplished over the past year, and then explore what our current projects are. We welcome your input at the end of the presentation or any questions along the way, so we'll get started. As we said, we are the Human Relations Commission known popularly as the HRC and we are an advisory body to the city council. We are an agency that has the discretion to act on matters within our charge, which is an extremely broad set of responsibilities. Our mission is to address human relations issues in the community and that includes things like raising awareness and understanding and resolving potential conflicts, especially when they involve any kind of discrimination or injustice. And we also reach out to the community to encourage community engagement and community building. Our primary responsibilities for many years now have been the following areas. One is to recommend funding allocations for a 30-year-old city program called the Human Services Resource Allocation Process, which is known as HISRAP. We recommend allocations for approximately 16 nonprofits and we take those to council and council sometimes ratifies, sometimes doesn't, but that is a key function where we run that RFP process for council. We also recommend funding allocations for the Citizens Development Block Grants, which is federal money that comes through HUD. And similarly, we make our recommendations, bring them to council, and sometimes you take them and sometimes you push back, but that's part of our process as well. In addition, we have a longstanding oversight of the Palo Alto Mediation Program, which is a free program for Palo Alto residents. It mainly involves landlord-tenant disputes, but it does tackle some other types of disputes as well. We approve the new mediators, we re-approve existing mediators, and we check their reports for the mandatory response law, which requires landlords to come to mediation if a tenant requests it. And in addition to that, we have a longstanding liaison relationship with the Palo Alto Police Department and I'd like to invite Commissioner Savage, who was our main contact with the police department, to speak a little bit about some of the updates she got from Chief Burns this past year.
We have a subcommittee of three people from the HRC who meet quarterly with Chief Burns on an ongoing basis just to be caught up with what is going on with the police department, any news, any bad or good, and then we bring that news back to the full council, I mean, the full HRC, so they're aware of it. And so I just wanted to go over a few of the items that we found last time we met with Chief Burns. First is the Citizens Academy, the Palo Alto Police Department Citizens Academy will return in the spring after a long absence. It'll be an eight-to-ten-week class, it'll run twice a year under the direction of Zach Perrone. Staffing the police has greatly improved, it currently only has one opening and that's the best it's ever been in the past 12 years, so things are looking up. Police Department may also be starting a juvenile citizens academy for high school students and it might be a joint effort between Menlo Park, Los Altos, and Palo Alto. Daytime residential burglaries and auto burglaries are up over last year. Number of houses that were burglarized that had a dog, zero. Next, the chief's advisory group has not met for a while, but it is expected to reconvene once the Citizens Academy gets off the ground. How are we doing on time? Should I keep going?
I think we're good.
Okay. As of last year, there were four citizen complaints, one or two of them warranted an internal investigation, and there had been one TASER activation last year. It happened downtown, but the TASER missed the subject it was aimed for. There is a new camera system on patrol cars, each car is now equipped with five cameras also, but not yet finalized. Every officer may be getting a body camera and that would happen sometime this year. There are now about four possible locations being looked at for the new public safety building and if everything runs smoothly, there could be a new building in three to four years, that would be the absolute earliest. Right now, the AOL building is at the top of the list. Palo Alto is getting new patrol cars, Chevy Caprice will replace Crown Victorias, they'll be getting about six new cars a year, and also officers are getting new portable radios, walkie-talkies. And so that's what we've learned for our last quarterly meeting, we have another one coming up next month and stay tuned.
Thank you, Commissioner Savage. And in addition to that relationship, we have frequently had member service liaisons to Project Safety Net, and I'm sorry to say, in light of today's news, that we may be deepening that relationship going forward, that's something we'll have to talk about, but it's been a longstanding relationship. So I'd like to move now into some of the accomplishments from the past year. As I mentioned HISRAP earlier, it is typically a two-year funding cycle and grants are made and then simply renewed for the second year, but last year, council took the extraordinary step of adding some money to the HISRAP budget. Since that additional incremental budget was not part of our normal RFP process, we had to create a second process and that was a key accomplishment for us. We advocated for the additional funds, then we had to create a new application, send it out to our agencies, vet all the applications, form a subcommittee, make funding recommendations, and I'm happy to say that we were able to facilitate some additional services for residents here in Palo Alto. One of the most exciting ones that I'll be telling you more about later this year is a collaborative approach which Palo Alto Housing Corp. adopted, where they are using the incremental funds awarded by city council to lease a van from Avenida, the second agency, which will transport low-income seniors from residences served by Palo Alto Housing Corp. to La Camita, a third agency which serves subsidized lunches. These seniors had felt very isolated in South Palo Alto and couldn't get downtown to services like the La Camita lunch program, so they're very excited. Now they'll have free door-to-door transportation on a pilot basis, so that's one of the examples of what the additional funding was used for. And as I said, we will have some more success stories, I think, later on in the year. Other accomplishments, moving on, we also had to review for federal requirements the second year of CDBG funds, so we did that with the help of city staff. We also conducted visits to many of the HISRAP agencies. The commissioners all took the responsibility of visiting two, three, some of us, I think, did four visits, and those site visits are crucial because we get to see our agencies in action on the ground, ask questions in a much more detailed, in-context way, and then when we send out RFPs, we really have a better understanding of what they do and don't have to just rely on boilerplate to explain what they're using the funds for. I'm sorry, was there a question? Okay. In addition, this year, we have hosted and moderated the first-ever senior summit, which was held here in Palo Alto. We had been concerned for some time that our growing senior demographic, which is the second-largest in Santa Clara County, it's now 17 percent, expected to grow to 20 percent in the near term due to the baby boomers aging into their senior years. We facilitated that summit because we wanted all of our service providers to have a chance to come together and share with us what some of the most pressing unmet needs for the seniors are. It was a very, very dynamic session, we got incredible turnout, we got a great deal of data that we are still sorting through, and our plan is the subcommittee that's assigned to do this task will go through all that data in concert with city staff and identify some potential projects that we would like to bring forward, both to the county and to the city, to see about providing additional services for seniors that are currently unmet.
Quick question, do you plan to do that again this year?
We got such good feedback from the first summit that we may, we may make it an annual event. I don't want to wear people out with meetings because many of the agencies are short-staffed and pressed for time. Maybe every two years will be the right fit. We also got a lot of feedback that they want to stay connected, so I've been wondering if we should have either a kind of a Yellow Pages of senior services or like an online wiki for senior services, or that's something our subcommittee is going to tackle because we want to be a place where people, a resource for people to come if they need to know how to connect with other agencies. People found out right there on the spot about things they never knew about and it was really exciting to watch those agencies start to collaborate right on the spot. Okay, so we did that, all right, moving on. We also attended the annual regional human relations breakfast. This may not sound like a big deal, but it's kind of a cool deal because the different humans relations commissions throughout Santa Clara County don't always have a lot of contact and we don't always have a lot of contact with our county colleagues, so this annual event is kind of our thing that we all do together, where we meet people and make connections. This year, for the second time, Palo Alto will be hosting that breakfast, so you'll be getting an invitation from the HRC. I hope some of you'll make it. It's a free breakfast if nothing else, so hopefully some of you will make it. In addition to that conference, several of us attended the California Association of Human Relations Organizations, known as CARO, and that was held in San Francisco. It's usually held down in Los Angeles and so many of us never had a chance to go before, so since it came to NorCal, that's also an exciting way to learn more about larger human relations issues. In keeping with our core responsibilities, we approved the new appointments of mediators coming into the Palo Alto Mediation Program, PAMP, and we reviewed PAMP's annual report, which they're required to give to us, their statistics on conciliations and mediations. And what we're doing now this year then is moving into some of our core responsibilities. It is the HISRAP funding cycle, the two-year cycle's kicked off again, so we now have a subcommittee that has reviewed and will be making recommendations at our meeting this Thursday, which we will discuss as the full HRC, and once we come to some agreement on those recommendations, we'll be bringing them to council. We are continuing to advocate for increases on a regular basis to the HISRAP budget and to the Rainy Day Fund that Councilmember Burt so thoughtfully recommended and put aside for those services in case there are cuts to the budget, we hope that they won't be impacting some of our most fragile residents. We also, last summer, had a wonderful intern who did some research for us on how other communities fund their human services, and that was very illuminating, so we are still sifting through that data, but we soon will come to you with that report and make some recommendations as to how Palo Alto might want to take the lead and really step up in terms of funding human services across the city. In addition, you'll be hearing more from us on the senior summit and what comes out of that in terms of identifying some projects to move forward with, and I'll be talking to both Supervisor Sumidian and to council. We're hoping there may be a city-county partnership that the HRC can facilitate, but that will depend on available funding and what kind of projects are proposed. And we have an exciting new project that was instigated by Commissioner Al Hasani to help house the homeless vets. Santa Clara County has the largest number of homeless vets in the nation and I'll turn it over to Commissioner Al Hasani to tell more about that.
Well, actually, I'm working on this with Commissioner Stone as well, so I can give the floor to him first.
Thank you, yes. So we first came to start considering homelessness amongst veterans a few months ago and Commissioner Al Hasani brought up it as an interest, and we began researching this problem in the county and I think a lot of our research was both enlightening and also a little disturbing as well. We learned that Santa Clara County has the highest, percentage-wise, highest rate of homelessness for veterans in the entire country. There are, as of right now, HUD released that there is 813 homeless veterans in Santa Clara County, 40 of those are Palo Alto residents, and of those, 71.2 percent are unhoused. We also met with Community Technology Alliance, they're a grantee of HISRAP funds, and they told us, along with the 40 homeless veterans, that 50 percent of them have mental disabilities and 23 percent of them struggle with substance abuse. We also met during our research with Supervisor David Cortezzi and his office, he's sort of really leading his own project to try to end homelessness amongst veterans in our county. And at first, Commissioner Al Hasani and I, we began to see that many cities across the country are having great success with a housing-first model and we were really excited, really interested in pursuing that. However, sort of the realities of a once-a-month commission, we started to realize that we may be biting off more than we could chew and thought it would be more prudent to go a different way. And as Chair Onan was mentioning, the senior summit, Commissioner Al Hasani and I believe that a similar summit possibly held in the summertime for veteran homelessness issues might be the best way to go to sort of educate people and I'll give it over to Commissioner Al Hasani to talk about that.
Yeah, so to piggyback off of that, we were inspired by the senior summit, so the first thing we did, one of the things that a former member of council had told us was that historically there hasn't been a strong relationship between the VA and the city. So we were finalizing meeting time, but we reached out to the VA, we're meeting with the VA. We've also are reaching out to different VSOs. We have a list of nonprofits that we want to reach out to, like Envision and American Legion as well, to invite them to this and be a similar idea that essentially veterans would come to the summit, they'd see all sorts of different organizations that could help provide services for them, and we think, you know, there's a lot going on that folks don't know about, this could be an educational event.
Thank you so much. And before we proceed to our next project, I made a mistake and wanted Commissioner Marin to tell a little bit more about the HISRAP site visits we did and I totally blew past that, so I'm so sorry, Dion, but could...
I thought I was next.
No, 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 why don't you go ahead and talk to, because you went on like four, you did more than anybody, I think, so why don't you talk about some of the site visits that you did?
I think I went on about seven or eight because it's such an honor to do so, frankly.
Make sure you're speaking to the microphone.
Pardon me. So I went on seven or eight different site visits to the different HISRAP recipients and as I saw it, part of it is, you know, part of our mission as the HRC is to continue community building and community alliances, but also the HISRAP funding has been such a... But also the HISRAP funding has been such an ongoing part of the HRC, it's an invaluable way to understand more about how those organizations are changing and how they're, you know, what value they give to the community, also to have some accountability and to update the HRC and the council on what their purpose is at this point. But, you know, just to give an example, I went to Abilities United in December, thereabouts, and learned that, you know, the history of Abilities United in our community goes back decades. It's, you know, what people used to call CAR and a place where people of all different ages would go because they had the warm pool. I learned that they, for example, they have the, one of the two warm pools in the Bay Area, and that's been shut down at this point. And then there were others. There's SALA, you know, so speaking, segueing on the issue of the Senior Summit at this point, we have a growing issue, the same issue that's all over our nation, which is a growing senior population. And SALA, that is the Senior Legal Assistance, Adults Legal Assistance Program, although they're based in Santa Clara County, a small group of attorneys who've been doing this for approximately 30 years, they come here and go to Avenida and meet with seniors who have issues such as domestic violence or social security issues, and they're invaluable. And we have issues in this, in this community that have to be addressed on an ongoing basis. And that's fundamentally what we're trying to do as at the HRC, which is to update the different information on those different HISRAP recipients.
Thank you, Commissioner Morin, and again, my apologies, and thank you so much for stepping in and doing a beautiful job on the site visits. A final project that we want to talk about tonight is housing. A couple of years ago, Vice Chair Baketti and I started what we call a learning series on affordable housing. We had numerous speakers come, and over some time, we educated ourselves as a commission about those issues. And then Commissioners Chen and Baketti went ahead and developed a report based on that. So Commissioner Chen, can you update us on what's going on there?
Sure. We all know that affordable housing in Palo Alto is very difficult. In response to the community need, we need to look at that. How can we get affordable housing for low and very low and extremely low income residents in the city? So we formed a committee, a subcommittee with Commissioner Baketti and I, myself, and we did it about a year and a half, and then we prepared a draft report, and we did a very thorough investigation in terms of research, find out the facts, and that we get data from income level, inbound, outbound workers, rental prices, policy, and practices. We find that close to 30 percent of Palo Alto residents are in the low, low-income category, which is like less than 80 percent of the average median income for a family, for a household family. And among them, between 61 to 72 percent are renters. And then, and 60 to 80 percent of them, they pay more than 30 percent of their monthly income for rent. That is called cost burden. Anything beyond more than 30, paying more than 30 percent, it adds a cost burden to the family. That means they have to cut down the purchasing power, buying food, clothing, and other living necessities. So that's very difficult. And more disturbing to me is more than 90 percent of the people who work in Palo Alto, they don't live here. Less than 10 percent, only 8.4 percent live in Palo Alto, which, what do they live? They live from, in the nearby cities and it was less cost. So, and that among those people, 90, 1,000 people in Palo Alto, they make that, like a quarter of them, they make less than $40,000 a year. That means they may be paying like up to like 75, 80 percent of salary just to get a two-bedroom apartment, which is very, very, very sad. So we think that's, we found there's a very severe shortage of affordable housing among low-income residents, workers in Palo Alto. So this is a very challenging issue, not only for the city, and for us, also for nearby cities, such as Mountain View as well. They had a meeting on that as well. So we brought this issue to our city planning director, Hillary Gettleman, at the end of last year, and then had a good meeting with her, and she suggests us to, instead of looking at the whole thing, this is too big a picture, we ought to focus a few things, and she suggests two things we ought to focus. One is senior co-housing because there are big houses in the city, and then there's probably one person lived there, maybe we could expand, have more people sharing this house. And the second thing is tenants' rights, and what kind of rights a tenant, in addition, we had the mediation, you know, committee, and then we have, we could think about other rights in tenant, and she also suggests strongly that we need to collaborate with nonprofits in the city. All right, so we are thinking about those directions. We don't know exactly what are we going to do. We're going to do some more research, look into the facts, and then think about it. And we do really need our council members to feed us back and let us know what other things we could move ahead.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Chen. So before we conclude our presentation, I would be remiss if I did not publicly acknowledge the many contributions of Vice Chair Baketti, who's one of the longest-serving members of the commission. As many of you know, he has struggled with some serious health issues and really has not been able to join us for some time now. But his term is ending shortly, and despite the fact that he's been out of action for a little while, his legacy will be with us for many, many, many years to come. He's been a true friend and mentor to all of us. And with that, I'll close our presentation and welcome input from council members.
Yeah, thank you very much for the report, and we missed Commissioner Baketti. I think what they have done is outlined for us what they think their priorities are for the coming year, and they have asked for council feedback on that. So I think it'd be helpful for each council member to give some reaction to the proposals they have for their 2015 priorities. Who would like to kick it off? Councilmember DeBois, do you want to?
Sure. First of all, thank you guys for coming and thank you for serving. I just have a couple of kind of questions just to learn a little bit more about what you guys are working on. I guess you mentioned the Betty Wright Swim Center, I think, at one point. Is there any hope that that facility is going to reopen? What's the current status?
May I, Chair? My understanding is it's not possible at this time. That is that the one that they have at this point is so outdated that it has to be rebuilt, and they're going to look into ways to rebuild it, but it's going to take years. Right now, they're concentrating more on focusing their funds and their income on broadening their programs, which I haven't spoken about, which are extraordinary, programs like small children who have significant challenges and their parents and adults, all sorts of other programs they have, which are an extraordinary benefit to the community. But we all would like that swimming pool to open.
Right.
And they do have, may I say one more thing? They do have some alternatives. There's, my understanding is that there's Sequoia, I believe, or one or two other places that have some ability to share.
Yeah, I just want to chime in. My understanding is that the Betty Wright Pool was built, I believe, in the 1950s or 60s, so it was about 50-plus years old, and the infrastructure was just impossible to maintain. But it's a huge loss because that pool didn't just serve Palo Alto, it served the whole county, and it was a very, very unique rehab facility for both children and adults.
Yeah. Do they own that building?
I don't know if they own their building. They've been there a long time, but I don't know if they own it.
I can't remember. I believe that they do own the building, and they're definitely expanding. I know that they're expanding, they're constructing in the back. It's the same place where in the back they have the magical, I've forgotten the exact title.
Magical Bridge.
Magical Bridge, yeah.
Bridge, yes.
I really like the idea of continuing the Senior Summit through some kind of online forum or wiki or whatever it is. And I also am glad to hear we're trying to connect to the VA Hospital. I think that's a great idea as well. There's a lot of great programs over there. The other thing, just to say, I'm on the School-City Liaison Committee this year, and we're definitely focused on Project Safety Net as well. So be interested to hear if you guys have ideas about Project Safety Net.
Thank you.
One other question. You talked about body cameras with police. Do we have a clear policy in Palo Alto about the use of cameras and when they're going to be on and off?
Yeah, the chief would have to address that. You know, we're just reporting that, you know, that they are in line to get them, which really would just be a protection for both them and citizens.
Right, but I think it was, was it Redwood City that recently had the issue where all the cameras were turned off? So I think just having some clear policies about that would be good.
Councilmember Berman.
Well, following up on Councilmember DeBois, thank you guys very much for all the work that you've done, and the site visits also that you guys are conducting, I think is a great way for each of you individually to, you know, better understand the different recipients of the HISRAP funding, which, you know, will only further help the recommendations that you guys make. Yeah, I was excited to hear about the Senior Summit and also the pending Vet Summit. I think that's a great way for you guys, you know, I think it was Commissioner Alhassani who mentioned, I think so, that, you know, you guys are, you get together once a month, and so finding ways to be as strategic as possible with your time, you know, and have the biggest impact with the limited time that you have is fantastic, and bringing different agencies together that focus on needs in the community is a great way to kind of hit a lot of birds with one stone, if you will. So I'm excited to see that. Yeah, I think, yeah, it's been a tough day for the community, another tough day for the community, and anything, any suggestions that you guys have on Project Safety Net, and let's also, you know, make sure that we coordinate so that there aren't different, different entities kind of trying to serve the same purpose when it comes to Project Safety Net. I mean, let's identify all the different groups, whether it's school safety or city school liaison committee, or HRC, or others that play a role with that, and let's get everybody together and, you know, really start trying to figure out a way forward because I don't have any answers off the top of my head, but I'm open to any suggestions that people have and anything that we can do. And housing, you know, so I think, you know, all the projects that you guys are looking at are great. I'd encourage you to add, to the extent you have the bandwidth, Project Safety Net to that. But, you know, I think housing, as we've already heard tonight and as we hear quite often, is such an important issue for the region and for our community. The, you know, figures of how many, you know, Mayor Holman at our State of the City address had the percentage of how many residents there are, how many renters there are, homeowners, and that was the one stat where I heard the most groans in the crowd of wow. You know, people just didn't realize that at all, that we're almost 50-50. I think it's 45-55 renters versus homeowners, and the impact that the increased cost of housing is having on people with fixed income and also people of low income is really having a really bad impact on our residents. And so, again, that's another one where there aren't any obvious solutions. But if you guys identify, you know, communities similar to Palo Alto that have come up with, you know, kind of innovative programs to try to address the affordable, the lack of affordable housing or anything like that, that's something that I'd be very interested in seeing. And I'm looking forward to serving as the liaison to the HRC this year. I'm sorry I didn't miss, or sorry I missed the meeting last month, but I look forward to seeing everybody. I think it's this Thursday. So that'll be great. Thank you, guys.
I wonder if I could jump in just for a moment, Vice Mayor. One of the many agencies served by our HISRAP program is Adolescent Counseling Services, which is in the schools, which is one of the frontline resources for troubled children. And that's one reason we are very passionate about HISRAP and trying to maintain and sustain HISRAP funding, because when we have to make cuts, that's the type of program that also gets cut, and that's very painful, especially when things like what happened this morning occur in our community.
Thank you. Councilmember Berman.
Well, first, I want to follow up on the Senior Summit, which I was able to attend, and it was really an outstanding event. One of the things that I heard from participants was that even though these were senior-serving agencies from really throughout the county, and many of them had worked with each other and many had worked with the city in the past, but not all of them had ever gotten together in one place. And in addition to whatever online tool you may be able to develop, I had a strong sense that there might be a value in creating a form of a collaborative, and maybe it's going to be part virtual functioning and part, maybe annually or whatever, getting together. But it seems that there is an opportunity to have greater coordination and collaboration amongst those agencies that are providing services. And the virtual tool, one thing you might want to look at is we now have a tool to help serve teens in the community, which is ClickPA, and you might just want to look at whether it has value. I know our staff is familiar with it. Then I had one other question on the housing. So in addition to what has been our traditional focus on what are truly defined as affordable housing units, which are in extremely short supply and very difficult to create in this high-cost environment, but I wanted to find out if you've been hearing more from members of the community about an emerging housing crisis for market-rate housing. I've heard from different members of the community who are moderate-income professionals who are just being driven out of the community, and whether there are, how much of a problem you're hearing about. And one thing in particular is whether, going forward, we might be able to develop some form of a service or have solicit one of the nonprofits to develop a service that would hook up available housing space for long-term rental in existing homes that are underutilized, homes or apartments that are underutilized. And as we have people aging in place, there's a dual benefit of not only, well, maybe three benefits, additional income to the renters, the ability to have someone present in the home to help serve their needs and provide that housing supply for those who would otherwise have to leave the community. And I think I've even heard that there may be a private website that is facilitating this sort of thing, not a Airbnb-type of thing, but for long-term space in the home, but most people don't know about it and use it, and it may be really beneficial to hook up those in need of the space with those who would be interested in providing it.
Great, thank you. Other colleagues?
Councilmember Waldo.
Thank you to all of the commissioners for all of your service and for being here tonight, and thank you for your presentation, everybody. Just a couple of things that I wanted to mention and ask about. On the issue of a civility roundtable, I know that there was some discussion about, or there was a hope to do a civility roundtable following on the model of what's been done by your counterparts with the Human Relations Commission in Mountain View, which seemed to be a successful model. And if you do have an opportunity to host one of those events and take the lead in bringing that model to Palo Alto, I've had the chance to attend one of their civility roundtables in Mountain View. I thought it was a very successful event, a successful model, and a great discussion. I attended one that was on transportation. So I hope that there is an opportunity to do that in the next year or two here in Palo Alto. I do know that it is a lot of work to put one together and definitely requires months of preparation. So I know you guys have a lot on your plate, so I'm not demanding it, but you have my full support if you decide to move forward. Also regarding housing, just a couple of things I'd mention. I had a chance to hear a presentation this weekend by Brent Butler, who's the planning manager for East Palo Alto, talking about housing, talking about the issues that they're facing in East Palo Alto and the kind of full-court press that they're applying to, finding ways to protect and preserve housing for current residents as they are facing gentrification. Palo Alto obviously is also facing gentrification, though maybe starting at a different point, going to a different point with a lot of going to a different point with a lot of the same issues. So I don't know if you had an opportunity to speak with Planning Manager Butler from East Palo Alto. If you haven't, I recommend it. He's actually a Palo Alto resident. He's a neighbor of Vice Mayor Schmid's and myself, a very nice gentleman, and I'm sure he'd be very happy to talk to you. I'd also, I'm also curious if you've had a chance to look at the San Mateo County White Paper that was just published, I believe in January of this year, studying a broad range of, you know, issues and options and potential policy programs around affordable housing. So just curious if you had a chance to reach out to those, those resources, and if you haven't, I'd really encourage it.
Thank you. Councilmember Scharf.
Just briefly, I'd also like to thank all of you for your service, and I think what I really appreciate about the Human Relations Commission frankly is everyone's enthusiasm. You know, everyone really cares and gets really into the details, and I was really impressed, seven or eight visits, that's fantastic. I was also really interested in the homeless vets. I thought that was great that you targeted it rather than just all homelessness. It seems that, you know, you might be able to accomplish something with a targeted focus like that. I was amazed when you said there were 40 homeless vets in Palo Alto, and I was curious, does anyone know how many homeless we have in Palo Alto, and what percentage are homeless vets then?
Well, if I recall, the last number we got, they come from two different sources. So this 40 number comes from a nonprofit called Community Technology Alliance, which is the, which builds the HMIS system for over 100 nonprofits in the area. So the 40 number comes from between June 30th of 2013 and July 1st of 2014, there were 40 folk, 40 vets who went to a nonprofit and registered, you know, for some kind of service and lived in Palo Alto's home. I think the-
The county, the HUD requires that each county provide a point-in-time count, so the last one for that was about 170. They recently just did one in January, and those figures aren't out yet, so hopefully in the next month or so, we'll see what the new point-in-time count is. And they do divide it up between, they break the information down, male, female, veteran, non-veteran families, and so forth.
So we're thinking just a little less than 25% in Palo Alto? And of that, the statistics you went through really quickly, what percentage again were, was it 50% are, have mental, right?
Yep.
And then, in a different category, 25%, was it 20 or 23%?
23%, yeah.
Right. Substance abuse. So do we have any sense of what overlaps on that, or if it's?
Not off the top of my, I can go back and check the dashboard. For what it's worth, the group gives very good dashboards on all the statistics, both at county level, and they can drill down to city level and more. You know, tell you the age group of this population, they can tell you male, female, they can tell you other factors, where I can send you that dashboard as well.
And obviously, there should be good VA services close by, right? So I mean, I'm thinking there should be ways to help people. Anyway, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Philson.
Yeah, just, thanks, just for, first of all, thank you guys very much for doing all this. I thought it was all great. I concur with Councilmember Scharf. I like the sort of the targeting kind of aspect to some of this. I think that's, I think that's the right thing to do. I thought, a couple of my favorites here were, I thought the senior in-place housing, I thought that was creative and interesting, and if you guys can find a workable model that works for, you know, all the parties involved in one of those things, I think that, I think that would be really, really good. Reaching out to the VA, targeting the, targeting the service, the ex-service people that are homeless, it's not a huge number, so I thought that was a good thing to do, too. And I did have one question, which was the community development block grants. How many of those, how many of those do you guys give out a year?
Right, just from year to year, they come in, I think, is it three categories? There's one for, you know, say, business development, and that would be something maybe like Downtown Streets Team might get a grant, and there's one for infrastructure, and say, one of our low-income residences would get a new roof or get thermopane window, I mean, or something would be repaired, and then there's a third category. Domenica, do you remember what it is?
Yes, it's a public service portion, so that's 15% of the total grant that has given to the city, so that's usually around $7,000, it's usually the smallest portion.
Okay, so what's the concentration? What's sort of the thing that the most of, the most of the program goes to, if there's anything, or is it just sort of a mix of everything?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Is there anything in particular that's sort of, you know, most of it's this, but some of it's that, and so forth, or is it sort of across the board?
You know, for the public service category, it's across, it's really about five agencies. They're funding domestic violence, homeless services through InVision Shelter Network. Mehdi, can you help me? Commissioner Hassan, you were just on the committee.
Yeah, we did Catholic charities.
Yeah, the senior ombudsman program that sends ombudsmen into the board and care homes for seniors.
We have Downtown Street Team.
Downtown Street Team, but they're under economic development. We very much try to look at what we fund through HISREP and what we fund through CDBG. There is one overlap as far as agencies, it's InVision Shelter Network, but it's different parts of the organization, but we try to target each of those funds to different agencies to have the broadest of impact.
Okay. Super, thanks.
I wanted to mention, too, that another very innovative thing that we're doing with the Citizens Block Development, Citizens Development, Community Development Block Grants, CDBG grants, is the new MAP program, I don't know, which I'm not sure if you're familiar with that, Councilmember. It's a micro-assistance enterprise program. It was very exciting. It was, it was small loans to help people get started with their first business. You may have read about it in the papers. That was a very innovative program, driven by staff but also supported by the HRC, to give people who are very low-income but have a great idea and just need a little bit of seed money to get started, and we were able to get several people started on their own businesses.
A micro-landing. Yeah, cool, thanks.
Good, yes, I would like to thank you very much, too, for your work and for coming here tonight. It's a good opportunity to meet and interact with you over time. I just want to repeat some of the things my colleagues have pointed out. I think the things that you do real well are, first, information of keeping your ears open in the community, what's going on, and sharing with us, identifying things that you can share with us. Two, I think the building relationships, a lot of what you do and accomplish are really reaching out. The senior summit is, is one, where you're gathering, but when you get together with other human relations groups and new ideas come out of that. Third thing is leveraging, looking for those places where with limited resources you can reach out and help gather community groups who are active and engaged. And I think it's important that you keep a focus, that instead of trying to do a little bit of everything to identify priorities like you've done for 2015 and focus on those. If I had to pick out one of the things that you said, it's hard for me not to say senior services. But I was struck like Councilmember Scharf with the vet presentation, that the number is striking in Santa Clara County and in Palo Alto, that there are a lot of leverage points for you to reach out to and work with, and I think the identification of them as maybe the most chronic and hard to deal with, make them a key target. So to end the session, I have two people from the public who would like to speak, and you can come and have three minutes to talk. First one is Chris Casey. Oh, sorry. We have one man, it's Stephanie Munoz.
Good evening, Councilmembers and Human Relations Commission Members. My name is Stephanie Munoz, and I'm a member of a small informal group called Stop the Ban, which formed last year when Palo Alto had a ban on sleeping in cars, which happily has gone off into the sunset. But we decided, rather than disband, we should pay attention to all the homeless issues, because after all, the people in the cars were only semi-homeless. They had a sort of a half of a home, and they were doing something for themselves, and there were a lot of people that had no home at all. With regards to the veterans, it seems to me that what ought to be done is the cities of Palo Alto, Mountain View, and Sunnyvale, and perhaps others also, ought to make an appointment with Anna Eshu herself, not one of the aides or administrators, and go and demand that the United States government fulfill its obligations to those veterans. They certainly have a moral and probably a legal obligation to these veterans, the ones, especially the ones who have the substance abuse and the, and the mental illness. It doesn't take a graduate psychologist to realize that sending people off to kill other people is not healthy for the mind. I, that, and the government not only, not only has the obligation, but they have the land, and we don't. They have Morphet Field out there, it housed hundreds of Navy personnel, and some Marines and some Air Force, and they could certainly fit people in there who would, who deserve the space. That's the first thing. Whoops. And the second thing is, I believe that the women of this community who are homeless need to be sheltered, they need to be protected, and I would like to suggest that the Human Relations Committee make an effort to connect with the, with the city of Palo Alto, so that Palo Alto would volunteer to rent the old Burge Clark Gymnasium, which has not yet been torn down. It's, it belongs to the Palo Alto Unified School District, the taxpayers paid for it. It's a perfectly good building. All the homeless people need to do is have someplace that's out of the elements, where they're safe, and a shower is helpful and a toilet is necessary. We keep tearing down buildings for no good reason. We've lost, we lost the Lee Building, we lost the Annex to the Roth Building. Please, if you could, thank you very much.
Thank you. And that brings to a close our discussion, and I want to thank you again for coming and spending the evening with us.
Thanks so much. Great, same, have a good night.
[inaudible]
Thank you.
I think senior housing is a very good idea.
Hillary, do you want to kick off?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Schmidt, and Councilmembers Hillary Giedemann, the planning director. I'm assumed to be joined by Joe Saccio, and Molly is going to assist as well from the city attorney's office. So the item before you this evening is a study session. This derives from a colleague's memo that was brought forward late last year. It requested a study session on vacation rentals, short-term rentals, and also referred commercialization of residences to policy and services. We've tried to address both of those, both of those issues in our staff report. We summarize in the staff report what are the current zoning provisions related to transient or short-term rentals of residences in Palo Alto, and we, and there are currently no exceptions to this prohibition on short-term use of residences in Palo Alto despite the prevalence of vacation rentals. We also have rules in our zoning ordinance regarding home occupations, and those are permitted, subject to very specific parameters in the zoning ordinance. There is currently no permit process, but property owners are expected to understand and abide by the restrictions in our code. All of these code provisions predate the quote "sharing economy" and could be clarified if that's the council's desire. At the council's request, I'm sorry, we looked at ordinances from several other jurisdictions. We provided samples in your packet of ordinances from San Luis Obispo and from the city and county of San Francisco. Both of those cities have slightly different takes on this issue and regulate in slightly different ways. We've also provided information in our staff report about our current code enforcement program, which principally operates on a complaint basis, meaning that we don't have sufficient personnel to go out and find violations of our code, but when violations or suspected violations are reported to us through complaints, we undertake an investigation and abate any violations that we find. The issue of transient occupancy tax also comes into play when we're talking about the vacation rentals, and Molly was going to jump in on this one.
Thank you, Hillary, Vice Mayor Schmidt, Councilmembers Molly, Stump, city attorney. So the transient occupancy tax is due on any short-term rental of 30 days or less, and that has long been the case with our transient occupancy tax. Palo Alto voters last fall did update the tax, both to increase the rate and to clarify that any broker that arranges for a rental is similarly responsible for collecting and remitting the tax to the city. The city is in the process of communicating with the various folks who arrange through websites for vacation rentals to inform folks of the new tax requirement. In recent months, some of the larger players in this space have voluntarily agreed to begin to collect and remit those taxes in several other larger jurisdictions, and we're hopeful that we can have a productive dialogue with them to allow that to occur here as well, assuming that that's consistent with council's direction this evening. I would point out to the council that there may be some connection as a policy matter between the approach you would like us to take on tax matters and the zoning issues that are more difficult and will take a longer period of time to, to address with any specificity, and Hillary will talk to you more about that.
Thank you, Molly. There are a number of policy issues or questions raised by this issue, not the least of which is the potential effect on the availability of housing in a very tight housing market, and this is what really drove the city and county of San Francisco to look in depth at the vacation rental idea. Also, as the colleague's memo pointed out in the council's subsequent discussion, the potential commercialization of residential properties and Palo Alto neighborhoods, and this issue of fairness, if hotels and other short-term accommodations are required to pay TOT, it seems only fair that vacation rental, legal or not, should be required to do so as well. On the other side, there's this argument that with the high cost of housing, some mortgage holders are making their mortgage every month or making their rent every month by being able to rent out their, their rooms on a short-term basis, and that's the other side of the argument. On that other side of the argument is also this realization that it's a changing world, this whole sharing economy wasn't around a few years ago, and there may be changing needs that we might want to address through policy changes at the city. So in terms of next steps, obviously, TOT collection is one of them, as Molly indicated. So in terms of next steps, obviously, TOT collection is one of them, as Molly indicated. Continuing our ongoing code enforcement efforts is another. And then, should the council direct us to do so, we would be able to pursue amendments to our zoning ordinance to make it more clear what our prohibitions are, institute a permit process if desired for any of these uses, and go on from there. I should say that, based on our experience and what we know from other jurisdictions, this is a very time-consuming endeavor. There's a lot of public interest in issues like this, and we think it would take considerable effort on staff's part to develop an updated set of zoning regulations. And our question really is, do we have the bandwidth for this at the staff and the council right now with all of the other priorities that the council has identified? With that, we'd be happy to answer questions, or we'd just be delighted to hear from the public and from the council.
Great, thank you. Councilmembers, want to raise questions, make comments?
Do you want to go by first or council first?
Council first usually in study sessions. Well, if there are no council comments, let me then go to the public. I do have three people who'd like to speak. First speaker will be Chris Casey.
Good evening, esteemed Palo Alto City Council. I am a Palo Alto resident of 33 years, and I am an Airbnb host. My guests, only one at a time, have a bedroom, half-bath, and shared shower facilities. They also have a full breakfast, if they want it, snacks, and the pleasure of my company. I share my extensive knowledge of Palo Alto, navigating Stanford campus, public transportation, and places of interest in the Bay Area. I sleep in my second bedroom, and I'm almost always at home. I am very careful about who I let sleep down the hall from me. I've had no problems, and to my knowledge, my neighbors are not even aware that I am an Airbnb host. At least 90% of my guests are visiting Palo Alto for a Stanford event. Few have cars and few have the financial resources to stay in Palo Alto hotels, even if there is availability, which is not always the case. If forced to go to the hotel-motel route, many, if not most, of my guests would be staying in Redwood City, Mountain View, or Sunnyvale. Instead, they are here, spending what money they might have in Palo Alto. Many times, I've picked them up from the Caltrain station and/or returned them there. I have given guests rides to places on campus or to other places in the median area for their Stanford activities, and I've helped some move into Stanford housing. I consider myself a host for Palo Alto, and even for Stanford, and do all I can to make their Palo Alto stay wonderful. I am retired and on a fixed income. My rate is low, and after taxes and expenses, I am left with enough money to pay my ever-increasing Comcast and Palo Alto utility bills, as well as keep my head above water in the most expensive region in the country. I do not have the money in retirement to travel the world, but now the world comes to me. I am not a landlord, a proprietor, nor a hotel manager. I am sharing my home, and am therefore a member of this sharing economy enabled so innovatively by Airbnb. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Sarah McDermott.
Good evening, Council. I'm Sarah McDermott. I'm with Unite Here Local 19, the Hospitality Workers Union in Santa Clara County, and I'm also a graduate of the Palo Alto schools. As an organization representing low-wage workers, we are very concerned with rental prices, and we have seen short-term rentals take long-term rentals off the market. That being said, there are very different types of short-term rentals, and I'm sure you recognize that. And the ones we're particularly concerned with are the ones that are removing long-term rental units. And I really appreciate the concern that the council has shown on these issues of rentals and housing already this evening. And thank you for taking a detailed look at the impact of short-term rentals. I think there are steps you can take to make sure that short-term rentals are not taking long-term rentals off the market, and that you are also able to enforce the policy that you decide on. For example, I caution against using a hosted versus unhosted model, as it is near impossible for the city to monitor. I think a permanent residency definition is easier to ensure and enforce, and allows people, like the woman who just spoke, to still be able to rent out space in her home. I would also say that, having read the staff report, the San Luis Obispo policy seemed like a stronger match for Palo Alto, particularly in regards to the permit requirement. And with permitting, you can also require a platform, not list properties that are not registered with the city. And I think with these steps, you can ensure short-term rental use without removing units. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Bob Moss.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Schmidt. These totally unregulated short-term rentals have a number of problems. One of them is they introduce a commercial use into residential zones. A second is, there is no one checking to see that the property is safe. Do they have smoke alarms? Do they have fire extinguishers? Do they have a means for people to get out of the house in case there's an emergency? Of course not. Nobody's checking. Another problem in safety, as you know, the police department has told residents for decades, one way to keep the streets safe is to keep an eye on people who are in your neighborhood, who are strangers that you don't recognize. In fact, there have been a number of burglars who have been caught by exactly that. Well, now, if we have renters coming in to these homes, how do we differentiate them between the burglars who are casing our homes? That's also a problem. And as the staff has said, and you've heard many times, you're losing money by not collecting the transient occupancy tax, hundreds of thousands of dollars. There is a simple way to find out who in Palo Alto is renting out their own homes or apartments in violation of the city ordinance. You check Airbnb, Craigslist, and some of the other online facilities one or two times a week. You can have one of your staff do that. They can identify all the homes in Palo Alto that are offering illegal rentals, and go down and cite them. Now, if you have to have a change in the ordinance which allows citing and fining people just for advertising homes for sale, for rental, do that. That shouldn't take eight or nine months. One of the other problems that we have is that a lot of these rental homes are not owned by local people, not even people that live in California. Many of them are foreigners, and they're using this as a source of income. So it's going to grow, and it's going to get worse, and we're going to have more problems if it isn't stopped soon. It can be done. You can stop it. It's no mystery where these people are renting. It's no mystery that it's illegal. There is no reason why we should keep it happening. Stop it now.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers. I don't have much to offer except that, in answer to Bob Moss's remarks about the illegal, illegal, illegal of it, at 101 Alma, it's 100 units. And there are a number of them, which a number of these units are owned by absentee owners. They live maybe in Mexico, or they bought it when the children were going to Stanford, or for one reason or another, maybe they have an ill parent in the East. For one reason or another, they're not there. And the apartment owners, the Palo Alto or condominium owners association, proposed to limit the viability of rentals in the apartment. They felt it would be sort of low-class, you know, having rentals, and that it should be limited to the ones that were already there. And they got a lot of bad feedback. People do feel that, for instance, the condominium owners association on a three-bedroom house, a three-bedroom apartment condominium, is $1,100 a month. And it's rather hard to keep that up if you don't rent it out, and that's why people do. They want the house, they know that they'll be coming back, they know that they might have a student at some time, and it's a tax expense for them to realize the capital gains when they could wait till they die, and then their estate would... It's true that they'd have to pay estate tax, but it's still less than capital gains when the base is upgraded. And so you have to think about what the United States government is going to do. They may abolish that, and that might make a difference. I don't see any reason why they have to upgrade the base when the person dies. They still have the capital gain, but there is more things to think about than you might think about. We rented... We had a big house in Palo Alto that we rented out for years and years and years, until my mother died, and that we couldn't keep it because the government wanted 39%. No way. So that... But there used to be a lot of people renting houses out in Palo Alto. And it's one of those, if it ain't broke, don't fix it things. I think you have to pay attention, and, as Bob Moss said, just look at the ads if you want to find out who's renting. But I'm not sure that making these illegal is a very, very popular thing to do. I'm just... I just don't.
Thank you. Next speaker is Rita Tetschoff.
Thank you, city councilmembers. In the city council staff report, it states that our current zoning codes do not allow for short-term rentals, as was stated through the evening already. Yet in this same report, much of the discussion centers on if and how Palo Alto should collect the TOT tax. I think discussing whether Palo Alto collects this tax or charges this to homeowners and gets a piece of the shared economy is putting the cart before the horse. What we need to be discussing is if we want Palo Alto to continue to thrive as a community, or if we want our community to turn into a transient living environment. Just because the buzz right now is "shared economy" does not mean that we need to turn Palo Alto and the homes that we live in into a shared economy model. So let's discuss what's really at hand. Do we want to change the residential zoning to a zoning that allows for businesses? I say no to that, but I'd love to see this topic discussed, not how to collect TOT. I'm afraid... What I'm afraid of is the city of Palo Alto will skirt this issue and effectively allow a change in zoning by not enforcing our current code. Just today, I was told by a zoning officer that they would not enforce the current code if homeowners are living in their home and rent out rooms while they're there. I suspect that most of the Airbnb rentals fall under this category, but this does not change the problem. It's still a violation of the code. My suggestion is that Palo Alto enforce our current zoning codes, but since the city claims to have no resources to do this, then they should put the burden on Airbnb, VRBO, HomeAway, all those different sites. Don't ask Airbnb to start changing their systems to collect the TOT tax, because this is just enabling hosts to break our zoning codes. Instead, ask them to automatically enforce our zoning rules by changing their programs to allow hosts to only rent out their home at most one time per month. This gives everyone the option to still rent out homes, but not break our codes. On a final note, if we allow this Airbnb model of short-term rentals in our community, then this is just the beginning of the changes we'll see. Make no mistake about it, renting out our homes is creating a hotel business in our residential areas. What's to stop folks from running other small businesses with a handful of employees coming to their houses, or to stop someone from selling goods and creating constant traffic? And for that matter, why don't I just put a sign in my front window that says, "Vacancy? No vacancy." I do not want to live in a neighborhood that's turned into a commercial zone. I already have a neighbor that does that. He rents out three to five people at a time. Besides the traffic, safety, and parking issues, the main problem is the lack of community. That feeling is disappearing on our block with just one rental. Like many great communities, Palo Alto's community is where we care about each other. We look out for each other. We care about our schools and our libraries, and we care about our city. But as we break down this model by allowing transient occupation, where is our city headed? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Marvin Weinstein.
Well, I'd like to thank the council for hearing me. I would love to completely support the words of the previous speaker, and what I want to do with you is share an Airbnb nightmare, which I personally lived through, okay? Because everybody's talking about the shared economy and sharing a room. But in point of fact, in my neighborhood, there is a house owned by somebody who lives in Asia, who put the house on Airbnb with a rental management company in San Francisco, and that company never comes to the house and looks at it, or essentially, never comes to the house to look at it. So we suddenly found ourselves in a situation where people were coming for three- or four-day weekends at a time, groups of 10 or more to live in a single house, parking up the entire street, partying until 3:00 and 4:00 o'clock in the morning. They were not poor people. They were driving very nice, expensive cars. They were businesspeople throwing parties. And it was almost impossible, only by dint of enormous effort, could we track down the rental agent and complain to him and say, "It's against the law." And then, by complaining to the city of Palo Alto, which was not really there for us, they failed us on this, we were then able to track down the man in Vietnam who owns the house and threaten him with enforcement. But the truth is Palo Alto does little or nothing to actually enforce it. We got a little bit of what we wanted. He's satisfying the minimum situation of the law by now renting out 30 days at a time. But the fact of the matter is, the minimum thing you should require if you allow Airbnb and you want to talk about people on fixed income realizing something, require that this can only be done if the owner is in residence at the property when they're doing it. Having random houses sitting around the city where people can rent them out three days, four days at a time, advertise them on Airbnb as vacation rentals, okay, or party rentals, and then have small parties come in who are boisterous, who are noisy, who don't have garbage pails. So they put their garbage in the other neighbor's garbage pails, and if they do that. Otherwise, they put them in front, thinking, "That's a great idea," and it blows onto everybody's property, okay? So there's absolutely no way this model is going to work for the residents of Palo Alto if you're not going to enforce strict standards by allowing this arbitrary use of short-term rental properties and trying to get your money out of the sharing economy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is E. Segre.
I would just like to reiterate what was said. Our next-door neighbors were partying until 3:30, 4:00 in the morning. We called the police. We called the police again, and we called the police again. I'd love you to experience such a thing. You'd make a different opinion. You'd have an opinion that prohibits this sort of thing. Garbage. Garbage flying out of buses that deposited kids. Garbage that people just didn't bother to pick up because it's not their house. They're just vacationing. Somebody else is in charge. Somebody else is in charge. The noise, the garbage, the parking. I wonder if those who are voting live with this situation. If you did, you wouldn't want it. You wouldn't want it for three months. You wouldn't want it for one month, for sure. And I hope you choose to prohibit this kind of thing since there's no supervision, no managing company that gives us their name so we can complain. And I would love you to fix this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Wyn Gersich.
My name is Wyn Gersich, and I don't live in this city. But where I live, I did rent a room out in my house. And I did because I'm taking care of my elderly father, and I'm half-time home and half the time away. And where I live, there's a lot of robberies and bad things happen. And I'd rather have somebody in my house watching it. And there's a lot of things that, especially for the homeless, there's a lot of people that end up losing their job, and they need to make their house payment, and that's why they rent a room out. In my neighborhood, there's lots of that. They don't rent it out for parties or anything because where I live, nobody would want to do that. But many people, the guy next door, he rented five bedrooms out, and they built a shack in the backyard. And the cars were horrendous. I mean, it was very difficult to find parking. And... But generally, you know, like Mr. Moss says, he's, "How do you know who's living there and who isn't?" When I had people living with me, I would introduce them to my neighbors. And I would let them know because if I wasn't there, I'd want to make sure that my neighbors were watching my house, too. And I didn't want my tenant partying and bringing people into my home to steal my stuff. So there's a lot of important parts about this. I mean, I know this is a rich city, and I think this vacation rental... If that happened in my neighborhood, I'd be upset. But what amazes me is that there's so many people losing their jobs. And if they're going to make their house payment, and I would think people would rather do that than to see their homes go into foreclosure. They rent the rooms out to make the mortgage. And that, I think, you constantly have to keep in mind, that that's an important part, that we don't want more people homeless. And they help the people because there's a lot of seniors that can't afford when these rents keep going up and up and up. And I was at the Board of Supervisors in San Mateo County a couple weeks ago, and they want rent control because they said a studio apartment in Burlingame was $1,900 a month. And when you look at these things about minimum wage, and there's very few places for people who make low income to live, and yet you want these people to work in these businesses and things. So people do rent rooms out, and they rent them out to the low-income people. So there has to be places for people to live. And another thing, too, is that National Toilet Day is November 19th, and they're trying to get more outhouses in all the cities because of the homeless defecating on the streets. And, you know, there's a lot of people that have mental issues and things that are homeless, but there's a lot of people that have lost their jobs, and they end up like that. And I think it's important to allow people to rent them out. I mean, I'm claiming my little bit of income for so many months on my income tax, and, you know, I pay for it. But I really feel that the party thing, like what these people went through, that is uncalled for. Nobody should have to go through that in a residential area. But I think the people who rent a room out in their house to save their mortgages or keep their property when they're unemployed or a senior, that's important.
Thank you. And the last speaker is Catherine Glassy.
Thank you, council members. I've lived in Palo Alto for almost 30 years, put four children through the school systems from kindergarten all the way through Pali High. And I am really sorry about all of the people who, it sounds like, are living through a very bad episode of the social network on their blocks. But I am fortunate that all of my kids are, in fact, away at college right now, and I still live in a house that was big enough to have held all four of them. And honestly, I feel guilty occupying it when I know there is an enormous housing crisis here in the city right now. I'm fortunate. I have off-street parking. I can have a couple of extra cars. And I definitely have a spare guest bedroom. And I'm considering making that bedroom available to people who would like to come into Palo Alto and work for a month or two, come visit their children who are going to Stanford or who are going to the hospital for cancer treatment. And if it's actually illegal, that's bad enough. But if you're going to tax me for doing something illegal, that feels really odd. Nonetheless, my motivation is, frankly, I'd like company because my kids are all the way at school. I love the security that one of these sites would offer me because they do do background checking. They vet them. They make sure that they can pay money. And there is accountability that those sites give me that I would never, in a million years, dream of doing through Craigslist or something like that. And I feel that I would be doing something to help, in a small way, alleviate the housing situation and the crunch that we're all in here. So I haven't done it yet. I came here to kind of find out what the position of the council was going to be on this, and I'm still listening. But there are some of us who would like to help. And by the way, I'm not selling my house because my kids want to come back and work at Palantir. So... And they don't intend to be able to afford an apartment, so they're hoping to come back. But that's why I don't want to leave. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. And thank you for everyone for sharing a variety of perspectives. Now, back to the council to give feedback to staff. Councilmember Burt.
Well, first, a comment. I think we should not be making our policy decisions based upon whatever transient occupancy tax revenue may come to the city as a result of any of those decisions. Second, before going into the short-term rental issues, there was a second aspect to the council referral that was about uses of homes for offices, where we have essentially companies or startup companies that are having full-scale startup businesses out of homes. And I didn't see anything in the staff report about that, but that was part of the referral from the council.
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Burt. We did unpack it, page 10. We have indicated that in the last year, we've received approximately 10 complaints related to home occupations. This is overuse of a home for commercial use, like office. Most of those, like the Airbnb or the vacation rentals we've enforced on, have been in the downtown area. And as you say, they involve overuse of a residence for an office-type use.
Right. I did read that part, but I didn't see anything about whether there is any analysis of policy direction on that? Or is this something that is going to be... Just continue to be an enforcement issue? Or I didn't see that part of the discussion.
Well, thank you again, Councilmember Burt. We do indicate somewhere in the staff report that one way to pursue this more diligently would be to create a permit process for home occupations. Right now, home occupations are allowed, subject to certain specific conditions, but those are up to the owner, property owner, to investigate and comply with, with no involvement at all from the city. If there was a permit process, like some of these other jurisdictions have established for vacation rentals, at least there would be a process where the owner would have to come to the city, acknowledge the need to comply with those conditions, and then there would be a permit that could be revoked if those conditions were not followed.
How would the vacation rental permit apply to occupancy for offices, office use, that wouldn't necessarily be short-term?
I'm sorry. I didn't mean that the vacation rental permit would apply. I mean to say that it would be similar to the way these other jurisdictions, like San Luis Obispo and San Francisco, have chosen to regulate vacation rentals. They've done that by, among other things, creating a permit process, an administrative permit process, so that the owner is responsible for obtaining a permit, and the permit can be revoked if conditions are not followed. It would be possible to do the same kind of thing, and many jurisdictions do, for home occupations.
So we had... We've had significant discussions on that, this, over the last couple of years in the context of our business registry. And our current code and we... Under the registry, we deliberately excluded qualified home businesses from having to register. But that's also defined, as I understand it, of occupant businesses and restrictions on the amount of square footage that can be used for your home business. But you can't have a bunch of employees out of your home, basically. So under what you described, it sounded as if that would apply to that group of residents who also have a home office that they conduct their business out of. I don't think that's the direction we wanted to go. We want to see if there are... And this was what I believe was the intention of the council referral, how... Whether we need to have something that addresses the specific problem of those tens or dozens of homes that may be getting used for running full-scale businesses and not the thousands where owners or residents have a small office for themselves in their home. We don't want to go down that path, I don't believe, and that wasn't the direction. But I haven't seen anything here in the report that really talks about this problem and how... Whether there are alternative ways for us to address it. And I have a number of questions, so I don't want to labor this too long, but I find that as an omission from the staff report. Is that part of the referral from the council doesn't seem to be really addressed, other than talk about those number of times where we've had code enforcement?
Well, forgive me, Councilmember Burt, but we've made the suggestion that one way to get a handle on these uses, where people are going beyond what is permitted, is to institute some kind of permit process. There are no details here. It would take a lot of thought and council input to shape that kind of program. But that's the only idea we've put forward here. If you'd like us to go further and investigate other means of regulating uses that go beyond what is permitted currently in Section 18.42.060 for home occupations, we can do so.
Well, I'll be interested in what my colleagues think. I'm not interested in making every homeowner who has a home office have to have a registry. I am interested in whether we can have better mechanisms to prohibit full-scale businesses with multiple employees from running out of offices. And that may be difficult to make that distinction, but I want to be clear, I'm not looking to go overboard to solve the problem, but I do want to make sure that we have adequate tools to address the real problem. I think after, you know, trying to think through how we balance some of these issues, one of the realities, and we... Members of the public may not have been here for the last... The previous hour with our Human Relations Commission, but we actually have a real need for longer-term rental in the community. And it seems that we may be wanting to explore ways that people who have spare rooms in their home are not doing night-by-night rentals in R1 neighborhoods, but are doing as frequently as once a month or longer-term rentals. And that we may even want to encourage that to help address our housing supply. I've heard from members of the community who have been seeking those kinds of opportunities. And we clearly have others who have space that they want to rent. Airbnb doesn't really address that kind of longer-term rental and matching up renters and rentees. So that may be a direction that we want to be looking at. In trying to get a handle on how big of a problem this is, the staff report said we really couldn't determine how many units because the listings, like on Airbnb and VRBO, don't list the addresses. Do they not list cities?
It's not always possible, when you search by a given location, to be sure that something's within a given jurisdiction. I would also say that the number of listings, when you do search by location, fluctuates. So it's really hard to get a good handle on how many of these exist. We know there are a lot.
Okay. So the fact that it's not always certain what location, and there is some fluctuation, I don't think would keep us from getting a pretty good rough estimate. And right now, we don't have this other than a reference to a Mercury News report. So it seems that we could get a pretty good understanding, based upon the city that they listed in and the average number that are listed. We'd have better information on how big of a problem there is right now and what the trend is. So I would like to see better data than what we've been provided.
Again, Councilmember Burt, we've tried to do... The staff has tried to do that, and it fluctuated dramatically. One weekend, there was a search that turned up 17, another weekend, 53, another weekend, far more. So we can continue to try, but we don't have the best...
You can provide range. And if the range is that, that's different from what we have in the report, which was the colleague's memo referred to the Mercury article that said, what, 300 to 400? And if you're seeing... Maybe that's just one agency. But if we're understanding that the problem is not 300 to 400, it's dozens or 100 or something like that, I think that's important to know. And that could be a range, to say, "It fluctuates, apparently, from this number to this number." And my next question is really for the city attorney. If we have an... Under our current code, if an owner is occupying and does short-term rental, does our short-term rental ordinance apply the same as if the owner is not present?
Councilmember Burt, are you asking about the tax situation or the zoning code?
Zoning.
I don't believe the zoning code distinguishes between owner being present or owner not. It's the... The issue is 30 days or less is a short-term occupancy.
And I'm leaning toward this limiting the number of rentals you can do per month and trying to encourage longer-term rentals. But if we did consider some permissibility on the short-term, the San Luis Obispo option of limiting the number of guests who can rent, I think would be very important. You know, these egregious examples appear to be when we might have half a dozen or 10 renters moving in and out on a day-by-day basis. I'm not saying I'm leaning toward that alternative, but if we did move in that direction, I'd certainly want to be restrictive on the number. Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Sharf.
Thank you. So I guess the first thing that struck me was really two parts of the staff report. The first one was that if council decided to prioritize this issue, you wouldn't have time to do other things, like go out and rezone for our retail and look at a bunch of other things. I thought that was very, very important. And then the other thing was, how many complaints have we actually had? So what I read in the staff reports, we've had seven complaints, and of those two were not legitimate. That means we've had five complaints. This hardly strikes me as a hot-button issue of which we should now expend huge amounts of resources on. I don't know if you have a reaction to that, but I sort of felt... And I realize it was from a colleague's memo, so this is not directed to staff, but I sort of did have that sense of, this is obviously not the hot issue of the moment, and that we probably shouldn't put a lot of resources into it.
Thank you, Councilmember Sharf. In terms of complaints, we do get a number of complaints. The seven that we indicated were from the last year, year and a half, on vacation rentals.
18 months is what the staff report said.
And the similar number or slightly more on the home occupation, you know, the commercial use of residential dwelling unit. I would say that the numbers aren't high, but each one of these takes a lot of work. And as you heard from the speakers this evening, there's a lot of emotional baggage associated with each one because it can be really disruptive of the neighborhood around the home.
So I guess there's a couple of things on that. I think, first of all, that it's a real mistake to conflate the two, the notion of the home occupation and renting out your house. I mean, I think it's a completely different issue. And, you know, I'm gathering our current zoning code does not allow me to take my single-family home and turn it into an accelerator startup and have, you know, 30 people. We just... I mean, it's just not allowed. And these horrendous stories of now on the residential side, I'm assuming the commercial side's just simply not allowed, and that we should have a strong, you know, enforcement reaction to it. On the residential side, we also don't allow it, and it's also complaint-based. But there seems to be less complaints, frankly, on that issue. I was a little struck by how different it was in my mind is if you have a... If you have an extra room in your house or an extra two rooms, if you're living there, what I guess San Luis Obispo calls "home stays." San Luis Obispo calls homestays. I personally would allow homestays. I don't see the homestays as to be these egregious examples where, you know, parties are going on and that kind of stuff. I would also say that the whole issue of parties till 3:00 or 3:30 in the morning are not just limited to, you know, Airbnb or any of these things. I can tell you from personal experience, I've had neighbors that had high school kids, until their kids graduated, they'd have parties on the weekends till 3:00, 3:30 in the morning. I'd call the parents, they'd say, why don't you call the police? I would call the police. I'd call the police three times. They'd come three times. So I wouldn't say that it's more of an issue of the use and what's going on. So if we do go down and come back with this, first of all, it's not, I don't think should be a strong priority, but if we do, I would like to see homestays allowed. I think we should then go on to something like the San Francisco model where we allow, you know, the homeowner not to be there, but it's limited. I don't know what the right number of days is, obviously, you're not going to design it from here, but I think San Francisco said the homeowner has to be there 275 days and can't, or can't lease it out for, you know, more than that. So, I mean, something along those lines, so it's not a business. And for me, the touchstone is, I don't think someone should say, I'm going to buy a house in Palo Alto, and I am going to run a business here where we rent it out 24/7, and this is really a hotel we're running. And I don't want to see that. So a little bit about the sharing economy. I think it's good for consumers. I think it's an alternative to a hotel. It's, you know, it's a very different person who goes and stays, you know, a couple nights in a homestay and someone's, and decides to go check into, you know, the Westin or something like that. It's not. I also think that we need to look and say to ourselves, if we are going to spend the time on this, we talk a lot about the TOT. I don't really care that much about the TOT. I mean, I think it's, obviously, we should collect it if it's available, but my big nightmare is that we go ahead and we spend three times the money on collecting the TOT than we get. And that seems really easy to do. And to me, that's a rabbit hole. I mean, I don't know, what do we pay a code enforcement officer? Anyone know? I mean, is it like $80,000 or?
Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head.
More than that with benefits.
So what I was going to say is, so if we pay $100,000, we could just basically double it and say that's $200,000. That's a lot of TOT to be collecting from our neighborhoods. So I'm very concerned that we spend a lot of staff resources on the TOT and that, you know, I just frankly don't care if we collect it one way or the other, unless there's a huge amount of money and, you know, we're not going to spend that much to get it. So that was the TOT issue. And I'm completely with Councilmember Burt. This TOT should not be driving this discussion at all. The discussion should be, how many complaints are there? Is this a burning issue? Is this really impacting the quality of life in the neighborhoods? Are there, are there short-term things we can do to make sure that we, you know, fix the quality of life? I mean, I wouldn't, I mean, the egregious examples of that, are there better, and I realize that this could be a cost issue, but, you know, if someone does make a complaint, and I think it should stay complaint-based, how do we get on it and get it resolved for them? And I realize they're time-consuming in that, but I suppose any of those kind of complaints are time-consuming in that. So I think the quality of life should be the touchstone on this. So anyway, that's really what I had to give.
Thank you. Councilmember Walback.
Oh, Councilmember Philson. I'll try to be brief here. I sort of got a little bit of a question, but I think the points that Councilmember Sharpe and Burt are pretty much on target, right? I think the chances that we're going to collect a lot of money on the TOT seems pretty remote. It sounds to me like, and we got a number of letters to this effect, too, there's sort of, kind of, maybe three use models of this, and I'm talking about the residential thing, not the, you know, running a startup out of your house, right? But there's, I mean, there's some that are, I think it's called the homestays. It's sort of like a low-key bed and breakfast kind of use model, and the owner's still there and so forth. And there's others that are vacation rentals, right? And there's a third one that's, you know, basically somebody running a hotel, right? Okay, except that they're running it in a neighborhood somewhere. So it seems to me like, you know, we shouldn't allow the hotel. And the vacation rental model, I don't know if it's like terribly high priority that we should put infrastructure in place to support vacation rentals. I guess I, I would gather that basically the model we have right now for all these things is, it's all illegal, but if you don't cause a lot of trouble, we're probably not going to get around to chasing you down over it, right? And so, and the homestay model doesn't seem like it's going to trouble anybody. So I guess I'm with Councilmember Sharpe on, you know, if a bunch of those, it's probably not our top priority to go after. The question I had was, for the people that abuse this, for the ones that are running hotels, the ones that are running, you know, party vacation rentals and so forth, right? It's really unfortunate that, you know, people have to call the police, you know, three times, and then, you know, what happens after that? Well, the next cruise in the next weekend and so forth, right? And the one homeowner that had to track down the owner in Vietnam and so forth, right? What kind of recourse do we have to make sure that, you know, I mean, do we have any recourse? Like you said, it's a lot of work, but do we have any recourse to put more teeth in it that we could go after those kinds of uses and maybe not harass the homestay people? Which we don't, right?
Well, just briefly, you know, we have a couple code enforcement folks who are really experienced, and they're getting good support from the city attorney's office, and that's what it takes. It takes, you know, and a complaint that comes in that is immediately, we are able to investigate, and then support from the attorney's office to really notice the violator and move on it as quickly as possible. We're getting better at this, you know, the more of these violations that happen. I think right now, we have a pretty good program. We're lucky that we haven't had, you know, a larger proliferation of these bad cases.
Are we allowed to fine people for this kind of stuff or anything like that?
I mean, we can issue citations if it comes to that. What we prefer is to get them to cease and desist if they're these kind of egregious violations. So that's what we're going for. Citation might be an intermediate step on the way to that, but we're really looking for compliance.
Okay. All right. All right, thanks.
Councilmember DuBois.
I was kind of going the same way that Councilmember Philson was going, that I think, you know, it's really these egregious examples that are the ones that are causing the problems. I'm also concerned that those professional rentals, hotels, they're pulling true housing off the market. And so, you know, if there's ways to identify particularly houses that are renting more than the number of bedrooms, you know, you see each individual bedroom plus the office plus the living room are being rented separately, you know, those seem particularly egregious. And so I see kind of these categories of, you know, renting each little room versus a homestay resident, which again, I feel more comfortable with, versus, you know, the longer-term rentals, which I don't think we're even discussing, but those seem totally fine. On the enforcement side, it does seem like, I understand, you know, we only have two code enforcement officers, but it puts a lot on citizens to follow up, gather proof, continue to hound the city. I thought Bob Moss's idea about some way of citing based on advertising or maybe narrowing the code enforcement based on advertising has some merit. And I understand you don't necessarily see the addresses, but maybe there's a way we could have our code enforcement people have a city credit card, and they rent and cancel the rentals just to get the addresses. Because I do think, you do see the particularly egregious cases, you'll spot them, you can see them all the time, and you'll, pretty soon you'll know, like, this is a professional house or rental. So just to be clear, home occupation with employees coming into a neighborhood is currently prohibited, right? Right, okay. So I did, I was following counsel on this last year. I did look in December, there were over 300 listings in December. It could have been the holidays, you know, so it could fluctuate quite a bit, but it was about the same as the number in San Jose in December in Palo Alto. I thought Annette Glankoff wrote a nice, a great letter with some very specific suggestions. So if we were to go down this path, I think, you know, having people register, thinking about maybe limiting the amount of house available for rental, does something like the number of bedrooms minus one or even less than that seems to make sense to try to identify the real egregious use. You know, if they register, they would have to have parking, maybe even as part of the registration, they would assume some liability for noise, which would, I think, help cut down on these noise abuses. And, you know, I think the other speaker that talked about showing permanent residency is another way to actually lighten the staff's load in terms of, you know, knowing that somebody lives in the house. I do think we need to be, if we do anything on this area, we need to be cognizant of those sites that are just advertising sites versus ones that collect transactions. So, you know, a lot of cities are going for tot from Airbnb, and Airbnb is one of the few that actually collects payments. HomeAway, which owns VRBO, Craigslist, they're just advertisers. And so I think we'd have to think about, if we were going to collect tot, we would have to notify property owners that they need to collect tot if they're not using Airbnb. I think San Francisco actually collected back taxes from Airbnb. How far back could we go as practicality?
Thank you, Councilmember DuBois. I think the first question is to get from council a sense of whether you wish us to focus on the tax issue at all prospectively, and that certainly would be our task number one if the council felt that collection of TOT was a priority. Looking backwards is, I think, a second step, because that involves potentially issues when you're talking about small homeowners or renters who are renting, that there may be issues of legitimately saying they were unaware that there was this obligation, et cetera. So there are lots of issues in terms of gathering the information that would allow us to do that, doing it in any kind of efficient way where we would not expend more in the effort than we get, and then these potential fairness or equity issues with folks who may not have understood the obligation at the time that they made the decision to rent.
Do you know how San Francisco did it? Like, how far back did they go? And, I mean, because the reason it's relevant is that that might create enough money that it is worthwhile, but I'm just wondering how they balance that.
There's a statute of limitations, so it would be somewhere between one and three years, and we would, you know, we would need to look at that.
I mean, the other thought on enforcement is, obviously, these code enforcement guys, they hope they're not spending 100% of their time on short-term rentals, so not all of their salary would be against that. But, so I think, again, if we could figure out a way to focus on the most egregious abuses, I agree, this is not a priority, it's on the top of my list, but even if you said it's, something's going to come back in 10 or 11 months, if we can agree to some way to do that, that would be fine. And the other last thing I would say is, I think more and more cities are collecting this tax, Portland, San Francisco, Chicago, Washington DC, Amsterdam, San Jose. So at some point, if we don't do anything, you know, we may be being irresponsible for not collecting it if a lot of other cities are. Just something to think about.
Councilmember Walback.
Thank you, Steph, for the report. And also, I really want to say thank you to the public. We've had a number of people come out tonight to share very thoughtful, honest experiences and hopes, and for a study session like this in particular, where the council's really discussing in depth for the first time, I think that that's very, very helpful. So I just really want to acknowledge that. We heard a diversity of opinions about where you'd like to see the city go, so I just really want to say thank you for that. That definitely helps frame the discussion, both from those who, or from those who have used Airbnb or services like that, had a positive experience, those who've had negative experiences from their neighbors doing it, and those who are still considering doing it in the future. You know, I agree with a lot of the comments that have been made already, so I'll just kind of reiterate a couple of them. I am concerned about, you know, at least, I'm worried about spending too much staff time on this. We do have a lot of priorities. You know, as the staff report pointed out, planning is short-staffed currently, and we've given a lot of priorities to the plan and transportation department just recently, including on retail protection and exploring that, which we just did last week, as Councilmember Sharpe pointed out. But, you know, if more and more, as Councilmember DuBois said, if more and more cities are moving in the direction of taxing this, and if we have a black market that addresses what's obviously a serious need, you know, for housing of a variety of income levels and expenses, and also for a variety of lengths of time, you know, there are real needs there, and if we have a black market, it seems logical to find a way to bring the reasonable parts of that into the open market, and if there are parts that are truly incompatible with residential neighborhoods, to prohibit that. So that does seem like a reasonable move to make. The question is really, again, I think, as all my colleagues have said, it's a question of priority. So for, currently, I'm not leaning towards this being a very top priority, but it's something that I want to keep on the back burner at least. That's where I'm at for now. I could be convinced to move it up. There is this important question about how this fits into our larger housing policy, our larger affordable housing policy, and I really appreciate Councilmember Burt, you know, raising this issue of, you know, what do we want to incentivize? You know, do we, can, if we do go down this path, do we want to explore ways to incentivize people doing this, you know, maybe incentivize people doing it below market rate? Do we want to find ways to encourage people to provide longer-term rather than shorter-term housing so that when people are renting, they do have that stability? But again, you know, the market does have a real need for some short-term housing for a variety of reasons, and we would be remiss to not acknowledge that and try and find ways to accommodate that within Palo Alto, as other cities are addressing it in the region. You know, and as far as the concerns people have had about noise, about the number of people at a time, about perhaps requiring the resident to be home for at least most of the time that they're renting out their unit, or perhaps requiring that if you're not at home, that you have to register with the city who is going to be staying in your home, you know, say, I'm, let's say I'm going on vacation to Amsterdam to say, maybe I want to swap houses with somebody who's in Amsterdam, let them come stay in Silicon Valley for a couple weeks, I go stay in their place. Maybe we'd think about having, you know, registered with the city, hey, this is the person who's going to be staying here for a couple weeks. You know, something maybe to think about, again, if we decide we want to explore this. But yeah, Airbnb and other rentals like this, they don't always lead, obviously, to noise, garbage, parking problems, and crime. Those are legitimate problems. We should be enforcing those problems as they come up, regardless of whether they're caused by Airbnb or by your neighbor's teenage kids having the party, as my colleagues have mentioned. I do want to make clear that, at least in my take, we shouldn't assume that allowing, you know, Airbnb or some types of rentals necessarily means that we throw out all of our zoning and that that would necessarily lead us down a slippery slope to completely permissive allowances about all kinds of businesses. My colleagues have made this point as well. You know, I would reiterate that, that we, even if we do find ways to permit some of this, that certainly does not mean we want to permit anything, whatever you want to do out of your, out of your house. So, again, it's not a big priority for me to have new ordinances drafted about this just because of the concern about staff time. I agree that the cost recovery should not be the primary, you know, driving factor. The negative impact on the neighborhoods should be the primary driving factor, and finding a way for people to do legally what there's an obvious need for. And, you know, when it comes to the impacts on the neighborhoods, I think that just better enforcement of our existing codes about things like noise and, you know, disturbing the peace, et cetera, I think we can just do a better job enforcing those. So that's where I'm at for now.
Good, thank you. Councilmember Berman.
Thank you. So in regards to the TOT issue, and Councilmember DuBois distinguished between Airbnb and some of the other websites, but it sounds like Airbnb is pretty easy to collect the TOT. There won't be a lot of staff time towards that, correct? I mean, it's, since they are the middle person.
You know, the situation is fluid and it's changing, and, you know, we've seen some changes in the approach of that provider over the past number of months. So we are just now starting our discussions with them because the new tax language just went into effect very recently. So we hope that that can be done pretty easily through the site, and then it is not potentially a very labor-intensive project.
Gotcha. And I imagine other municipalities have, you know, set up similar systems with them that we can try to emulate, or are they starting? that we can try to emulate, or are they starting to change their model based on this issue and trying to kind of get themselves out of the fee collection business?
We hope that there'll be an interest on their part to do it just through their software, which we believe they have the capacity to do.
So, I mean, I agree with pretty much everyone up here that, you know, collecting the TOT shouldn't be a driver of council or city or staff action. If it can be done pretty easily, I'm not opposed to it, but if it's going to, if we're not to expend a lot of resources, then obviously that's a different calculus. I think clearly there's a difference, and, you know, it's funny, I found myself almost feeling like the old curmudgeon up here. You know, there is a difference between people, you know, owner-occupied rentals and not owner-occupied rentals, and I think you get a difference of the way people treat the accommodation, and you probably get a difference of the type of people that are seeking that accommodation. And, I mean, I can speak from personal experience. You know, I've gone with friends to rent places for a bachelor party, let's say, where nobody's staying at the house, and we treat it differently than if I'm going somewhere and staying with somebody where the owner's inside the unit. And I think we should be cognizant of that.
We'll leave those pictures.
Being honest, I appreciate it. And it's, you know, there's, there are some benefits to, well, I won't say anything, but it's, but, I mean, but that does have an impact on our residents, and I think that's something that we have to take seriously. And if we can eliminate that use of, you know, that element, I guess, of the shared economy when it comes to housing accommodation, I think it's something we should do, because it's not fair to residents to not know who's going to be, you know, to not know that there's no oversight at all of who's staying in a house next to them. And if the owner's there, there's a, you know, there is at least limited oversight, there's somebody that they can go to if there's a problem. If nobody's there, you know, that's not a situation that I'd be comfortable with. Is that something that we, I mean, you know, is that, but how easy of a distinction is that to make without taking up an inordinate amount of staff resources to, you know, create an ordinance and enforce it?
Well, I think that's the approach that San Luis Obispo took. They created a, you know, they enacted an ordinance that created this definition of home stays and set in place certain rules that the homeowner or the renter of the unit had to abide by.
Yeah. And, but, but that's something that would take up an inordinate amount of staff time?
It is going to be quite an endeavor to prepare and adopt an ordinance like that, just because there's so much interest in regulating or not regulating these types of uses. I did go through something like this in the North Bay. It took months and months and months of emotional testimony and in staff convened meetings and at the board to make progress and get to resolution.
So, what can we do to make it easier for, but it's, but all of that is currently illegal, correct, under our current ordinance?
It would be complaint-based enforcement right now.
So, what can we do to make it easier for residents to complain, I guess, and to get resolution to their complaints, you know, more quickly?
I think it involves resourcing the code enforcement function to a greater extent. We have two code enforcement officers that do not just this type of code enforcement. I mean, they're doing work without permit, people who are exceeding the scope of their building permits, people who are not abiding by conditions of approval, people who are implementing uses without prior authorization. So, there's a whole, you know, scope of activity for two people citywide. If we put more resources into the function, we may be able to do more on areas of enforcement that the council would prioritize.
So, and we're talking about that in this year's budget developments, but, you know, that's the ability to respond after the call has come in. So, you're also talking about, you know, how is there better awareness and the potential for outreach? We could take a look at that. At the same time, I'm also hearing that there's a range of behaviors that are not in agreement with our zoning ordinance, some of which are more egregious or disturbing than others. So, I think we would have to take a look at, you know, that aspect of it. Right now, I mean, it's clearly complaint-based, and we would actually be out and investigate, obviously, with more code enforcement people. We can do that faster, potentially, and more follow-up.
But, so, it's code enforcement, but it's also, I mean, it's also kind of, you know, our police. I mean, if something's happening at 2:00 in the morning, I imagine our code enforcement officers aren't working, and so it's, so I don't know if it's...
Well, I think, and it relates to that sort of a situation, we could get back to you, but I think we're highly responsive that...
No, and I'm not arguing with that, but maybe it's an awareness issue of, you know, our residents need to know exactly, you know, how to go, if they feel like, you know, somebody's misusing a residence next to them, you know, what their recourse is, and how to go about trying to get attention quickly. And if the police go out there, how do they prove, I mean, you know, what's their process for proving, wait a second, this is a residence that's being rented out, that the owner isn't, you know, currently here, and that violates our code, and what's their recourse at 2:00 in the morning? I mean, what, can they evict people from a residence if they find out that somebody's renting?
Our police are often, some of our first-line folks in terms of customer service and providing an interface with the public, but their first responsibility is to address violations of the criminal law, and certainly to abate any health or safety problem that's occurring in real time. So, a call at 2:00 in the morning would presumably be about noise or some other kind of health or safety matter, and they may be able to address that. If it's merely the existence of a rental situation, I mean, if the peace is being kept and there isn't a health or safety, and it's a report of a rental situation which violates our zoning code, I would expect the police to refer that to code enforcement folks, because it's a civil matter. So, it would be dealt with through the civil process, the code enforcement officers would make contact, they would work with a lawyer in my office if need be to inform either the owner or the owner's long-term tenant, who might actually be the person doing the rental, of what our rules are and seek, having that cease and desist.
Okay. Thanks.
I'm sorry, go back on the sort of Attila the Hun mode here, but it seems to me that, following on the thread that Mark's working on, is it possible that we could look at sort of the, not that end of the process, but sort of the next step in the process after where you are, which is, you know, I mean, if we had some kind of citation regimen, that, you know, the fourth time in 12 months that, you know, you get cited for this thing, you know, there's sort of a very painful, right, sort of financial implication to that, you know, and the fifth time's even worse, and the sixth time's even worse after that, and so forth. And it seems, if we had something like that, maybe that would effectively filter out the professionals, okay? But, you know, the first lady who spoke here, you know, would never run into that. So, I'm wondering if there's, if maybe there's some way we could work on the back end of the process to do the separation there.
We can look at that. It's my understanding that on these serious matters where, you know, folks have talked about eight, 10 bunks in a house, where we do get that complaint, we have been successful in working through the process. There isn't a second complaint, because we get the use to cease and desist.
Yeah, I'm thinking of the people that are running a hotel, and there's only a few of those, right?
Right. So, we do, we do want folks to go ahead and make that call, and then we can get that into the system, and we have found that we've been successful with those.
So, you feel like you got enough support in the codes and so forth to do it?
We do.
Okay.
Mark, are you done?
Yes.
Let's see, I just have a couple of comments. I guess, first of all, the positive side. I mean, this is a good thing. I know, you know, lots of young families who could not go on vacations, travel with their kids without something like this. I know taking my grandkids to places I otherwise couldn't go, a much better experience than a hotel. So, a lot of benefits opening up for visitors. On the other side, I thought a good point was made from a residence. A person might all of a sudden have a larger house that's not being utilized effectively and having visitors come by. Being a host can be beneficial, both psychologically and monetarily. So, there's some real benefits coming out from this new economy. I think back to when I was young, and there probably was not a railroad station in Europe that did not have a public official in his little kiosk finding you a place to stay in a home in the community. And it was vetted in two directions. If you wanted a home, you had to show your passport, which was their security, and on the other hand, he handled complaints, and you had two or three complaints, you weren't on the list. So, you had this double vetting taking place. And I think that's what's going on online now, is you have an intermediary, and as someone pointed out, I wouldn't rent my house to anyone, but they do background checks. They get financial statements and cards and letters, so, you know, there's a protection in two ways. So, I think, you know, one of the key things is, can we work with online, some of the newer and better-established online organizations that can work through on the TOT issue, but more importantly, can work to vet both the housing use and who is coming and staying there? So, enforcement, you know, can we cooperate with certain, you know, online activities in the enforcement? And you can, can you put in things like limits on number per year, number per month, number of guests, things like that, as well as the TOT? So, my feeling is that this is a valuable and good thing if it's done appropriately. The question is, can the city, you know, establish something that is non-intrusive but has a third party who could vet both sides and keep a record of what's going on and operate effectively? Okay, if there's no other comments, Councilmember Berman.
Well, we've gone around in circles here, and I think we just need to be clear that some of the recommendations that we've been saying would require code changes. So, if it's to require owner occupancy or to, but allow these rentals when it's owner-occupied and perhaps limiting the number of renters at a time, that's not something that we can do without changes to the code. And so, if we're going to rationalize this in the future, we'd have to give staff at some point in time a direction to change the code. We haven't done even that on any kind of a consensus tonight. We've had a bunch of us say, well, I'd like to move this direction, but nothing about wanting to have staff prioritize this, at least nothing, not a consensus I've heard. And then if we don't do that, we have folks that were saying, well, if you don't really abuse things, and there aren't complaints, we're not going to go out and aggressively enforce this. And that might be an appropriate balance if we are getting better code enforcement than we were at the beginning. And staff kind of alluded to that, but I think that's really important, because if we have these egregious situations that are ongoing, we have a problem, and we're probably going to need to address it. If we're now better at that code enforcement in the egregious situations, and the neighbors don't have to wait six months to deal with something like that, then we may have struck an appropriate balance. So, I think we need to give a little better guidance to staff on which of these directions we want to move.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, let me ask staff of what exactly you need to move ahead.
So, thank you. And again, I don't want to lose sight of some statements that the council did reference, that in a pretty simple way, we were indicating the challenges of making significant changes in this arena in the near term as having a significant impact. We didn't get into a big trade-off discussion as to how that affects all the other issues impacting our community that you've said are also actually not only very important, but in many ways, I'd say, based on those conversations, much more important than where we are with this issue. Let me just go back real quickly. This colleague's memo came to the council on December 15th and asked us to turn this around. And so, basically, within two months, the staff had this on the council's agenda. I think it was a good survey of both our current practices and some options that are out there. I think that some of the reporting was just to be responsive to the council and reporting, and not advocacy. So, the issue of TOT is just identifying the fact that we're not collecting TOT, I don't think, and I wouldn't be recommending that we pursue that. We talked about the potential for different kinds of zoning changes, as Councilmember Burt was pointing out, and I think we're really, the way the thrust of this report reads, I think, and I think where the council is coming from, that that's a potential for a lot of work that really is much better spent in some other areas. And to be honest, in a simple way, I would say we ought to revisit this in a year from now, as it relates to that issue, to see where we are. The last thing, though, really dealt with this issue about, are there improvements to code enforcement as it relates to the existing situation? And one thing I would commit to the council right now is, I think, yes, there are. That is something I think that the staff can go back and look at. There's issues of even, are there enhanced coordination? Is there additional outreach and information about some aspects of this? And do we have a sufficient capacity, for example, to ensure where we are in responding? And I'd be happy to say that we would be willing to report to the council how we're doing on turnaround on reporting also, so you had a sense of that in the near term. And, I mean, that's where I would see, we are mostly right now, otherwise we start to get into, let's talk about a lot of the other things that are on the council agenda and the implications that it has for you.
Okay, I guess staff has recommended that this is a complex issue, there's a lot on the table, and maybe coming back in a year or so might be a more appropriate next step. Why don't we take five minutes to just go down the council and see where council members are on that issue? I have a light from Councilmember DuBois.
I think the city manager kind of said what I was going to say, which is, I think, let's backburner the issue, let's continue to monitor it, and it comes back in 11, 12 months, great, and if we start to see a lot of issues, you guys can bring it back sooner. I guess a separate issue for consideration is because Airbnb is starting to pay taxes, and they have a way to do it, do we get in line and request that they start to pay us taxes?
Thank you, Councilmember DuBois. Yeah, so, to be clear, we have begun that conversation. We have made that initial contact, and we will carry forth along the principle that that's relatively straightforward, it's an institutional partner, that if we can get compliance that way, it's relatively easy.
And the fact that we're collecting those taxes means we can still enforce our ordinance that prohibits the activity?
It absolutely does mean that.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else want to make a one-minute comment? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just in case anybody has lost sight of the time, I do apologize, we have not moved the clocks ahead. It is not 7:32, it's 8:32, actually, so, thank you.
We still are 10 minutes ahead of our agenda. Okay, thank you. That completes the two study sessions we had today, and it brings up to the item on agenda changes. Any motions or movements on that? City manager comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, just three items to report. First of all, I did want to share that our city is participating in the second multi-city innovation campaign, which we participated in last year, which, I think, God, garnered some recognition and innovation award from Harvard, I think. But we're continuing to partner a little bit with our friends in Nashville and former Mayor Yahweh Yeh and the National League of Cities. And this year, 25 municipalities are participating, and the challenge is to produce a mobile app with civic benefit related to health, related to health broadly defined. And we thought that with the council's recent adoption of the healthy city, healthy community priority, that we're especially excited to announce our participation. So, the goal is to engage technical talent within the community to create technologies that can improve the way residents experience and understand their cities. In this case, each partner city would contribute $5,000 to the developer team if it chooses to deploy that new technology in the community. So, CSD Director Rob DeGoyce is leading our city... So CSD Director Rob DeGoyce is leading our city participation and asks that you help spread the word to those who may be interested in pitching an idea for a mobile app that supports community health and well-being, particularly appropriate. So app developers can submit their ideas at multicityinnovation.org by March 27th. And two community events. On March 28th, city staff and the Coverly Community Center tenants will host a Coverly Community Day, and the day will be filled with demonstrations by Coverly tenants, volunteer opportunities like tree planting, food, music, and kids' activities. And the event aims to showcase and demonstrate Coverly's vibrant community and the opportunities and activities available to the public at the center. There will be volunteer activities from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and program demonstrations and food and other fun activities from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And the event is hosted in partnership with Canopy, Kiwanis, the Charleston Shopping Center, and the Green Meadow Community Association. And then on the next day, Sunday, March 29th, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m., the Palo Alto Arts Center is hosting a free program for the community and families, which will enjoy drawing activities inspired by the arts center's current exhibition, Hear This, as well as music for the whole family. So activities begin at 2:00 p.m., followed by an exciting musical performance by School of Rock students at 4:00 p.m. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. That brings us to our second oral communication, which is scheduled in the usual place during the calendar. I have seven speakers. First one is Eamon Gormley. You'll have three minutes once you start.
My name is Eamon Gormley. I'm with Transform, the lobbying group. And tonight's topic is road diets. So you're driving home, you expect to be there in five minutes, and then suddenly everything grinds to a halt because of an accident, because your two-lane road just became a one-lane road. So it takes you half an hour longer than usual to get home, and you open up the newspaper and you see that the men in white coats have planned to permanently narrow that road from two lanes into one. And your response, your reaction is, well, you're not terribly impressed. And this is a perfectly understandable reaction. It's a logical reaction. So let's try and get inside the heads of the men in white coats and see where they're coming from. So first of all, it's important that you don't look at the arterial route in isolation. You have to look at how it fits into the overall street grid. So in this case, we'll look at Avenue D running west to east. This is your main arterial route. It's wider than the others. It's got more lanes, fewer stoplights, and so on. If we take the example of the people traveling from west to east along this route, the vast majority of people using the corridor don't actually begin their journey on the corridor. They begin somewhere else, and they have to move to the corridor to make use of it. And once they do, then it quickly becomes pretty congested, because we're funneling everyone into this arterial route. So it gets crowded pretty quickly. So what happens then when you narrow it? So the men in white coats get their own way. There's fewer lanes. Well, the difference between this and an accident is, an accident is an unexpected, unannounced event which catches people by surprise. So that does cause congestion. But a road diet is announced ahead of time, and people have time to make alternative arrangements. And this is what happens, they find alternative routes. So no longer is everybody funneled into Avenue D. They're, they're taking more direct routes, and the traffic is dispersed across the street grid and is diluted thinner than a homeopathic remedy. So that's how it works in theory. Also, you could probably shave a few more cars off this, depending on what kind of road diet it is, because if it's for bike lanes, some people will be biking, and if it's for dedicated bus lanes, more people will be taking the bus. So you'll have even less traffic to think about. So how does it work in practice? If I can get this movie playing. This is Heding in San Jose, which was famously reconfigured from two lanes in each direction to one lane in each direction in favor of bike lanes. And you can see here, there's not much congestion on it. This is Wednesday morning, 8 o'clock during the commute. Everybody predicted this was going to be a catastrophe. Everybody predicted this was going to be a mess. Everybody predicted it was going to be congested. Where's the congestion? I drive this route every morning now. That's part of my commute. I drive home in the evening at peak time. There's no congestion on Heding. So the bottom line is, road diets, for whatever purpose, do not cause congestion. So traffic engineering can be a bit counterintuitive sometimes, and I hope the council will bear that in mind when it comes to issues such as dedicated lanes on El Camino for the BRT system. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Ken Horowitz. Horowitz, sorry.
Thank you. Good evening. Ken Horowitz, I live on Homer Avenue, Palo Alto. I sat last week for the total meeting and didn't speak, because I, I kind of felt that we were going around and around and around. But I did want to address a couple of things. Councilman Sharp earlier mentioned hot issue of the moment, and I think hot issue of the moment for Palo Alto right now is retail. Mayor Holman addressed this in her speech, state of the city's speech. She mentioned she, we've lost 70,000 square feet of retail, which this, this week, we saw that the fresh market is going to go out of business, more retail going. And then I liked Councilman DuBois's remarks that he posted on Palo Alto online, which is, we got to start making it harder to convert retail to office space, which is why I'm here tonight and why I'm going to be here every other month, as City Manager Keen is aware of. 755 Page Mill Road was the site of a recreational facility, the former Palo Alto Y. I know one of the priorities of the council this year is healthy cities. And by the way, this county of Santa Clara County has just published something called the Health Element, which is a 90-page document, which has really good information about, and so this council doesn't need to reinvent the wheel there. But what I'm asking you to do, and to give you an update about what's going on at the Page Mill Y, nothing has gone on. It's been six months. The place is vacant. The landlord is doing some renovation at the top. Eventually, he'll get down to the bottom. My hope is, as Councilman DuBois mentioned, we want to make it harder and harder for Mr. Wheatley to convert that 15,000 square feet into another office space. I want you to keep it as recreational. When he was granted that space, it was part of a planned community space, and I don't know if he's going to come forward to council at some point and ask that it be amended, but I hope you'll be forceful and say, no, no more office space. We want recreational there. It's important for the seniors. That was a senior place that people could go to get recreation, to be healthy. And that's what our goals are for this city. So thank you for your time, and I'll be back and give you an update in a couple of more months. My goal is to keep hope alive. And by putting this energy out with you, I'm trying to keep hope alive. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. Next speaker is Stephanie Menoz.
Good evening, councilmembers. My thoughts also were with that very, very long meeting, which was ironically supposed to be a shorter meeting, but that you were, Mayor Holman was looking for more efficiency. And I thought I had an idea that might make some things a little bit more efficient. It seems to me that on these big issues, every one of you has some ideas. Why can't you, each one of you, put your ideas, however many or few they are, on a single piece of paper and have them available and have them posted, so that the people coming in also can see that they're available? It wouldn't obligate you to vote a certain way or to talk a certain way, but at least we'd know the ideas that you had going in, and that would facilitate, I think, your own discussion. And the reason that makes me think that is, Councilmember Sharp, at the 11th hour, said, we need an ordinance to prevent ground floor space being converted to office, and everybody agreed. They could have done that, you could have done that, first of all. You could have said, oh, I notice everybody agrees with this, so why don't we agree to do that, instead of putting it off? And it also seems to me that the way that that could be done would be to have a new and different designation. Instead of having a designation of retail or service, have a designation of public interactive. And that would, I think, provide this vibrancy that I keep hearing about. Have you all heard about vibrancy, how they want the town to be vibrant? Well, I think what they mean is they want to see people going in and out of these down-ground floor offices, and that, that seems like vibrations. And that's not a bad thing, and it could be very easily, it could very easily be done by simply all over town, forbidding any kind of static office connection that has only its own employees and not members of the public in their, on that ground floor. That's really my, my major contribution. And if there was time, I would suggest that you look into housing in a, in a way that we not waste buildings that we already have. It's really sad that the county and the cities all went around looking for some kind of a place for housing, when that gym was there all the time. Thank you.
Thank you. William Xu.
My name is William Zhao. I am a junior at Palo Alto High School, and I am the president and founder of Project Anybody. And basically what that is, it's, we're a teen group made up of kids from Gunn and Pali, and we work on projects and events that raise awareness of climate change in the community. So currently, we are hosting a hashtag PA Got Green contest for middle schoolers and high schoolers, where they can submit their artwork, their writing, on how Palo Alto is being green or how it can be more green.
Hello, everyone. My name is Emily. I'm currently a junior at Gunn High School, and I'm the secretary for Project Anybody, which, again, as William explained, is a youth committee that is trying to raise awareness for environmental issues in Palo Alto. So we just want to encourage all of you to, you know, inform the youth in your lives or your communities about the PA Got Green contest, and for them to submit art, writing, or photography that will raise awareness about environmental issues in their schools and their communities.
Okay, and after the contest, we are having a VIP reception at the Mitchell Park Community Center on March 26th from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. And we'd love it if you guys could come, if you just come in for a couple, like, minutes or seconds. We'll have other organizations, teen groups, and it'd be awesome if you could show your support for teen groups and sort of the environment, and as well as share your ideas. So, I don't know, can I leave?
Can we distribute flyers?
Okay, here you go. There should be nine. Yeah. And if you have any questions, feel free to email us at projectanybody@gmail.com.
It's on our card.
It's on, yeah, it's on the flyer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that with us, and I hope you send the council a reminder of that date and time. Be very helpful. Next speaker is Winn Gerson.
I came here to tell you what happened in Sonoma. Last Tuesday at 7:00 in the morning, I get a phone call from Mike Francois over there, because he was up in Napa area working. And he calls me and tells me that Sonoma City Council voted down fluoridation. Yay. And I hope that their leadership will go in all the cities of California. And it was really kind of amazing going to the, I went to their city council on February 18th, and I spoke against fluoride, and there was a lot of other people too, and it was quite a debate. You should look it up on, on a computer. Just check out February 18th, Sonoma City Council. The last three ladies that spoke were really outstanding, but it was amazing to me how a group of dentists could get up there and advocate drinking a hazardous waste product with lead and arsenic in it, in the drinking water, when, you know, when anybody in the medical field, their oath of, for healthcare is to do no harm. And I'm, I'm saying, well, how on earth could drinking something with lead and arsenic and it be safe? And, and they wouldn't rub dental gels on a baby with no teeth, and they wouldn't rub dental gels on the gums of a senior citizen with no teeth. So why on earth would they want to put fluoridation in the drinking water for toothless babies and toothless senior citizens? It's malpractice. So when these people are advocating to drink a hazardous waste product, it was, it was wonderful that the Mayor Cook of Sonoma, he knew with all the data that we presented that, and the studies here on genetic damage that it causes cancer, fluoridation does, because it's phosphate fertilizer waste with lead and arsenic in it. And arsenic certainly causes cancer, and lead lowers children's IQs. And the dentists didn't even want to take our papers, which was even more amazing. But I was so glad that the mayor did something about it, and we left the 15 university studies from Polconet from Fluoride Action Network, like the ones I left you guys. And the city council has seen some of the dental fluorosis studies. And also too, as I put this book, Fluoride, The Aging Factor, by John Yomoyanis, which who did the cancer studies, he and Dean Burke. And it has everything in here of why you shouldn't be fluoridating the drinking water. And I hope that Palo Alto now would be a good leader, especially at the Basquiat meeting coming up, to stop fluoridation. Because what this does, since that man was here, this last time I was here, and he was talking about having a Bike-A-Thon for strokes and arterial sclerosis, having heart attacks, the number one thing that causes heart attacks is fluoridation, because it causes collagen disruption, and it calcifies your arteries. And then it causes Alzheimer's, because it also causes blood flow not to go to the brain, and it causes early dementia. And that's what this whole book is about, Fluoride, The Aging Factor, and how it causes us to age faster than we should, and why it does cause Alzheimer's, too. So I'm going to put on public record again, when I was telling you about the imid ingredient, here's the study, how they took it out of cold remedies, and here's about the arterial sclerosis caused by the stuff they put in our water.
Thank you. Next speaker, Sally Lever.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council. I really appreciate council's attention to all the many issues that are before you. I feel like I've seen and heard a lot by being here tonight. I did want to talk with you just for a moment about the issues relating to Caltrain. And I was very heartened to hear in the study session with the Human Relations Committee, the discussion of Project Safety Net, and that's a great effort coming forward from the community. But I really believe that there's more that Caltrain could and should be asked to do. Specifically, that they gather and analyze data for the deaths by suicide of every teen, every adult, and every child that has died on the Caltrain tracks. Currently, they're very committed to their current level of record-keeping, which is to keep lengthy alphabetical lists of names of those who have died, but not to look at locations, days of the week, times, any of that other information that is so readily available to them. Caltrain can and should be asked to at least consider using federal funds to block areas of the tracks. Currently, their position is that they will only use the federal funds that are accessible to them to address cut-through traffic and not to address suicides. And they're, they've stated that you can't stop someone from killing themselves if they really want to. That doesn't align with the data that's been produced in hundreds of, of studies. And in fact, there was an article in the New York Times today about means restriction And in fact, there was an article in the New York Times today about means restriction and how that works. They can and should be asked to consider video surveillance. That's something that could be done, could be achieved regardless of what changes there are to the right of way and would be coming up in the future. That's a very cheap solution that could save lives and could mean one less loss for our community, and it's something that other systems regularly use and could be used by Caltrain. So I appreciate your consideration of those three items. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Omar Chadi.
My name's Omar Chadi, and I live in San Jose, but I come here regularly, five times a week, and I worked here for 17 years. And I'm here about Caltrain again, as you know. Pali teenager was killed this morning on the tracks in Churchill -- at Churchill. And I'm asking you again to please reach out, and let's look to the future. It starts today, even though if it takes 15, 20 years, to replace this 1864 track with BART down the peninsula, which has to be grade separated by law. I'm asking you to please reach in and get some chutzpah, and let's get started talking to VTA and to BART, and let's see what we can do to reach out to them and get rid of this train. This train does not belong in Palo Alto. This is the most educated city, and this train, it's not rural anymore like it was when it was put in here. And they can put all the gates and all the guards up that they want, but it's like putting an ice pack to a radio vacuum tube. Remember the vacuum tubes? To cool it off. Lo, let's go to the IC and let's go to the transistor, and that means BART, which will connect the whole Bay Area. You know, Mr. Scharf, you mentioned a hot issue. I don't know what a trigger is, but 218 people dead on this track, on this corridor, since 1995, when the California High-Speed Rail Authority said they're going to use the Caltrain tracks. That's a lot. 60 people have been killed since 2011, when I started going to each of the city councils after somebody gets slaughtered and dismembered on these tracks. Eight years, year-to-date have died. Four of them are Palo Altoans. You've got to do something. You've got to get moving. I mean, you guys are city officials, so don't tell me there isn't money, because there isn't money for the tunnel to put Caltrain through to the Transbay Terminal. There isn't money for the Central Subway. There isn't money for the LA Subway. There isn't money for the Cal -- for the -- for Mayor Lee's $12 billion for the second two. There isn't money. What we need to do is we need somebody, and I'm hoping this city council will have some leadership and build a consensus. And I learned that from Rod Dearden, by the way. That's how we got the Light Rail done. He built a consensus, and it got built. And now he's on High-Speed Rail. Incredible. So it can be done. I'm not trying to slight that. I'm just saying it can be done. We need some leadership here. And you do have a mandate. Your people in Palo Alto, as well as Mountain View, voted 2/3 for BART, even though there was no discussion for that tax increase. And the same in the 2000 vote. If we had started in 2000, we could be on our way pulling BART down on both sides of the Bay. So please, team up with Quentin Kopp and Gavin Newsom, and let's see if we can't do something, maybe use some of the High-Speed Rail money. I don't know. But we need to start with some alternatives. You can't just sit on your hands while people are dying out here in this old train. Okay? I mean, you can't -- I mean, it's okay to hide with code issues and everything else and worry about people smoking in parks, about the danger, but this is killing people. And I'm asking you, let's get something going like the residentialists had with the residential -- let's start getting people here who've been affected active to kill this, to get on with BART. Thank you.
Thanks for coming by.
Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to speak. I came in to congratulate you guys for not being part of that list last week, but since this gentleman brought up, you've lost another Pali resident, that is sad. You know, last week, I was up working in Sonoma County for three weeks, and I was hearing every day that it was a train incident. And I said, I was just hoping one doesn't happen in Palo Alto. I was just hoping, unfortunately, it did. You know, I think you guys are doing something, but in this county, because of where it is and what better home say you were in California, you -- your youth and the students that live here and the people and the success are under a lot of pressure to succeed. That's why people from my side of the tracks, East Palo Alto, don't come in here and end up on the tracks. We're not under that pressure to succeed. Not that it's wrong, but you have a lot of pressure on this side to make -- to not fail or to rise above the odds, to beat the odds. And that's a lot of pressure over here. You know, you guys have all -- every time one of your stores over here has a grand opening, you have lines of people out to buy the first item or whatever. Be first, be first. You know, you have a lot of -- you just have a lot of pressure here. And with Google and Facebook right here, Oracle right there, Apple right there, everybody wants to live here. Rent -- San Mateo County wants a county rent control. They're talking about it. And people are renting out their houses. You see, all this is all interlaced, and you have to just sit down and look at it. You cannot stop -- even if you put the rails in, like BART, up, people will find a way. You know, San Francisco last week or the week before had a guy that was in the tunnel when he got hit. So what was he doing in the tunnel? He found a way to get in the tunnel. There's only so much you can do as individuals. You can put all the gates, you can put all the cameras you want, but with the pressures and lifestyle and the survival out here, and if you're in this section right here in Palo Alto, you're going to continue to have them. I hope they go down. I hope they go down. And to piggyback on what Winn said, yes, Sonoma did say that -- Sonoma that morning announced it on the radio, they did defeat the fluoride issue. You know, I think Basque are just supposed to be overseers for the county, for the 26 cities that are there, but I think as a group, they can tell San Francisco, if the majority of them say, "We don't want it, we don't want it." And with the new universities, Harvard being one of them, the top university in the United States downgrading it, the next two top universities will probably be the University of China when it's built in India. They're building universities based on what we've taught them, and as you know, they really do research, and those two countries don't use fluoride. So we'll see where that issue goes in the future. But I'm sorry to hear that about Palo Alto. Sorry.
Thank you. And the last speaker is C. Reddy.
Good evening. It's very tragic to hear a loss of life, and it's something that we cannot resolve here. It takes a community, a family, friends, many, many things to make people feel better and not have to do these things, and my condolences. So moving on to the next thing, I think we need to -- I saw that Palo Alto's one-bedroom average rent is $2,900. I think I plead for the community to be less greedy this year, and we don't need any rules. Nobody needs to tell us anything. We don't need rent control, but look at the world. You know, the world inflation is down. In Paris, in France, you can buy houses about 25%, 30%. Most of Europe is -- prices come down. So I plead to the community, to the leaders, that I think we need to be a little nicer to our people that don't own homes. Just don't be so greedy. And I plead to the real estate community not to push up the values, you know, inflate the prices. There's no 40% increase every year, year and a half, so just be patient, and we don't need any more rules. I don't want anybody to tell us what the prices or rents should be, but I think we should be a little bit less greedy and let it work out, and the wages catch up. And I think we still need to work on the minimum wage to be about $17, and we haven't done anything, so please think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. And that completes oral communications. We move on to the next agenda item, approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion? We've got out of practice, I think.
I move we approve the minutes. Second.
Okay. Councilmember DuBois moved, seconded by Councilmember Berman. All in favor? Please vote. And that passes unanimously with Councilmember Niss and Mayor Holman absent. Brings us to the consent calendar.
I'll move approval of consent. Second.
Okay. Move approval by Councilmember Scharf, seconded by Councilmember Burt.
I'd like to move that we pull item 7 off consent to clarify that it's for affordable senior housing.
So we have -- yeah, we need three.
I'll draw them.
Okay. So Councilmembers DuBois, Burt, and Walbach.
Mr. Mayor, I would propose, given the way your schedule is tonight, we'd be in a position to take this up right after the consent calendar and before the last action item that you have tonight, so you can deal with it immediately.
Okay. If there's no opposition, let's do that. Become item 11B. I have several speakers on consent. They are both on number 7. Maybe they -- we could hold off on that until we get to number 7. Any other comments? So with 7 out, all in favor, please. And that passes unanimously, 7 to nothing, with item number 7 withdrawn. That brings us then to item 11B, which is the request for finding that Stevenson House rehab proposed ownership structure is compliant with the planned community zoning ordinance. Staff, do you want to?
Thank you, Councilmember Schmidt. Hillary Gittleman, the planning director. And the item before you is an interpretation of an ordinance that is included in your packet. It's on page 327. This is a planned community zoning ordinance, which provided that Stevenson House was permitted the following uses, a quote, "nonprofit senior citizens' housing development with not more than 120 dwelling units with dining, cultural, and recreational facilities for the use of tenants." And what we're requesting of the city council is that we interpret that phrase, "a nonprofit senior citizens' housing development," as a -- instead of nonprofit, as affordable. What is being proposed is a change in the ownership structure of this nonprofit entity to allow them to qualify for tax credits to fund the rehabilitation of the facility. I know there are members of the Stevenson House board here or on their way here. They were having a meeting this evening with their residents to answer questions that you might have about the reason for this interpretation, but it's purely a zoning matter, interpreting a city, the city's planned community zoning ordinance. The decision to proceed with the loan documents to effectuate a city loan of $1 million to help fund this rehab will come to you in early April. Happy to answer any questions on the ordinance, or I know there are speakers on this item.
Mr. Mayor, I would also just add, just for the record, that it was clear that this afternoon, Cara Silver from the city attorney's office did send a supplemental memorandum to the council that spoke to many of the matters that Ms. Gittleman was just talking about, and she's certainly here to also answer any of your questions tonight. Thank you.
Let me turn to Councilmember DuBois and the other two seconders, if you want to make a statement. I then have seven cards from the public.
Can I ask questions as well?
Yes.
Yeah. So thank you for pulling this material together. So I just want to clarify, you said we could pass this based on the continued affordability. Does that mean we need to amend the original PC zoning ordinance to state that it's affordable senior housing?
Thank you, Councilmember DuBois. Cara Silver, Senior Assistant City Attorney. I don't believe that the PC ordinance itself needs to be amended. What we are asking for is an interpretation that the project, as stated, falls within the definition of the PC ordinance. So what we would recommend, if you wanted to further clarify the continuing affordability requirements, that you direct staff to work with the applicant on the zoning compliance letter that is attached to your packet to clarify that there will be continuing affordability on the project.
And would that last only for the length of the loans? I mean, is there a possibility that the loans would be paid off and then that requirement would go away?
Theoretically, under the PC ordinance, there's not currently an affordability requirement. And so the affordability requirement comes in through -- previously, it was through the ownership by the nonprofit, and currently, when prospectively, it will be through the deed restrictions. So there are, you know, several layers of deed restrictions that would apply, and they have different terms.
Those are tied to loans?
Loans and tax credits and various items.
And is there an issue? If we wanted to change the underlying PC, would that mess up the timing of the financing? Is that the issue?
I think the applicant can speak to that. It certainly could be done. If you think it's necessary, we would probably advise that it be done on a parallel track, that you not delay the current compliance letter.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Burt, did you want to speak to your?
Yes. So you're saying that we can substitute nonprofit for affordable and that they would have the same meaning in this circumstance? Did I understand that right?
It's not an actual substitution. I think it's an interpretation of the PC ordinance that, when it was adopted, the ownership was under a nonprofit, and it was operated as an affordable housing project. And so the same type of situation will occur under this current ownership structure, but it will not be owned by a nonprofit. So we view this as a zoning interpretation issue as opposed to formally requiring a zoning amendment.
See, and then a lot of the concerns that have been raised have been that through this process, PAS HPI hired a new management company who then came in and terminated most, if not all, the existing staff, hired some of them back as temps without medical benefits and other concerns as to whether the tenants are going to have the same level of service that was provided in the past and was expected. In what ways, if any, do we have discretionary control over those actions through our approval of this change before us tonight?
Well, I'll start, and perhaps Hillary can assist here. The item before you is really a zoning interpretation. However, you are also being asked in April to give a $1 million loan, and Stevenson House has had a long history of partnership with the city. So there are many avenues that the city can pursue to address some of those issues. And I know that there are members in the audience who would like to speak to those issues because they are of concern to the council and the community.
Okay. So I -- I don't know. Hillary, were you wanting to add something?
I guess I would just clarify that in a slightly different way. When the loan comes to council in April, it will be accompanied by a commitment to a regulatory agreement to ensure the long-term affordability of the senior housing on the site. I don't think even in that context, the council would ever get into actual, like, who is selected to manage a facility. But you would, I think, have an agreement executed. In fact, there'll be a number of agreements at the end of all of this to ensure the affordability and the level of services that are required.
Okay. So in that last -- Okay, so in that last part, on level of services, that seems to get to the crux of the concern. The affordability would also matter, but we haven't heard anything about changes to the affordability. What we're hearing about is changes to the level of service. And then a second concern about whether this new for-profit management company that's being, has been brought in, has a very different standard in terms of how they are treating the employees who provide those services, and concerns as to whether those services will be comparable as a result of these changes. So that's what I want to understand, is what kind of discretionary approval we have on this, and what kind of leverage we have to assure that the services that we have always equated with Stevenson House and the quality of affordable housing has been related to how well those affordable seniors have been provided services. If we're seeing indications that that may be, have changed in a substantial way, what discretionary approval would we have? What guidance or action or indications can we provide tonight to help assure that when this comes back to us in April for the loan, any corrections that we think are necessary for us to approve this loan have been implemented? So I don't, is that clear enough in my question?
Thank you, Councilmember Burt. You know, I think we can look at the regulatory agreement as a vehicle for ensuring the level of service that's provided to the residents, since that was clearly envisioned as part of Stevenson House from the beginning. I think it would be good to hear from the applicant in this case about how they're intending to ensure the level of services and the team they're putting together to move forward with the project. They're much more equipped to talk about, to address some of the concerns you've articulated than we are.
And do we know why, and maybe the applicants can speak to this, why the management change occurred and these apparently pretty significant changes to employee status had to occur concurrently with this new tax-exempt agreement? I'm not following why both happened simultaneously and why the one necessitated the other.
The applicant can answer that question.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Walbach, did you want to speak to your?
I'm happy to go to the public.
Okay. Let us go then to the public. I have about six speakers. First is Jill Harris.
Hello, and thank you very much. I'm a resident of Stevenson House.
So you can, yeah.
Better? Is that better?
Yes.
My name is Jill. I'm a resident of Stevenson House. I've lived in Palo Alto about 45 years. Went to Palo Alto schools. A few of you may remember Mayfield, then Jordan, Wilbur, Paly. And I went away for about 20 years and then have come back. And as most of this meeting is taking place about housing, you know, and affordable housing. And when we moved here, my family, I was under 10, and four-bedroom, two-story house was $150 a month. I worked at, when I came back to Palo Alto, I had a very hard time finding housing. I house-sat, I care-took. A group of us rented a house that had three or four bedrooms so that we could share it. There was a studio I wanted to rent that, it was $200 a month. And the owner said, "How much do you bake?" I was working at St. Michael's Alley. I said, "600 a month." He said, "You don't earn enough to rent this place. We need it not to be more than 25% of your income." So housing is so important, and Stevenson House is just a gem in Palo Alto. And so I have contacted a number of you, and I've just been concerned, because I've been there seven years. The executive director was there eight. The maintenance, head of maintenance, very competent, was there at least seven. You know, and to have them just gone, and to have this, that we're going to be a construction site for probably two years, starting with these changes, that it's costing $36.8 million, and that there's been very little honest discussion with the residents. We didn't know the executive director was going. We didn't know, you know, what was happening. The staff didn't feel like they could talk to us. And so we're really concerned, that connection with the staff and the honesty and support that we got. We really want that, that's been essential. And we want that to be an integral part. That's what community is. Affordable, yes, and community, yes. And I'm so appreciative that you're taking a second look at this. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Next speaker will be Patrick O'Regan.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Patrick O'Regan. I'm actually the president of Stevenson House, and I'd like to point out that there are several members of our board here that are in the back. They will come up and speak to you later. But I just want to iterate one thing, is that we're all volunteers. We're all committed to affordable housing and keeping it affordable. We don't get paid. I asked for a salary increase earlier today, 1,000%, and they said no. We're all very, very dedicated to affordable housing, and our board is very concerned. We did, there has been a change in management. And what I can tell you is that a lot of this, we're doing a, we are a 501(c)(3) corporation. We're doing a low-income housing tax credit deal. This is one of the most common ways that affordable housing gets rehabbed. Where, this is what we're doing. We've got an older building there that's in much need of rehab. And what we're trying to do is to, you know, do it and minimize the impact on the resident while maintaining the highest quality level of services we can. But what happened is, these things are fairly complicated deals, but we still own the land underneath it, but we did bring in a, you know, we do bring in a tax credit partner, and then we also have a management company, Jon Stewart. And the reason why we did that is, we owned our own assets, our own real estate, the buildings. We didn't need a real estate broker's license, but what we had to do is, we had to bring in a, we had to bring in a, you know, somebody that was approved by HUD. So unfortunately, affordable housing, you know, and I somehow think that's a discussion for another day, but it's really getting much more complex to manage. The reporting requirements are very, very difficult. And so we needed somebody like Jon Stewart and Company to come in. We carefully evaluated the situation. And then we brought in Jon Stewart and Company in. We feel that they're a good qualified manager. They've been approved by HUD, and, you know, and I think, but to say that we want to maintain the level of services is not an understatement. I think you're going to hear from, and I would like to open up to the other members of the board, we're all nonprofit people, and that we're all dedicated to housing. And I think that we really want to maintain the high level of services that our residents have demanded. And not here just for today, but 15 years, 20 years, 30 or 40 years, long after I'm gone, we expect that this place will be affordable. And I would just ask you to consider, you know, following the staff recommendation, it is affordable. I know nonprofit, PASHBEE is a nonprofit organization run by a bunch of volunteers. So thank you.
Great, thank you very much for coming. Lydia Tan.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the council. My name is Lydia Tan. I am a volunteer for Stevenson House. Before I became a volunteer, I actually was working as a professional consultant for Stevenson House and had been helping them think about how to recapitalize their project. It's a 45-year development, had been undergoing a lot of physical deterioration over time. And Stevenson House, when they first came to me, said, "We would like to make sure that we maintain local control, local nonprofit control over this community asset." And so rather than go out and essentially hand over the project to one of the larger regional nonprofits, really worked very closely with Stevenson House to find a way for Stevenson House to maintain that local control, but still take advantage of a lot of financing that's out there for affordable housing, including low-income housing tax credits, including a new such-and-eight program that had it put out. And altogether, that brought in enough money so that Stevenson House has $14 million to be able to invest in its project for construction. And what I would say is, Jon Stewart Company, while they are a for-profit, they manage the bulk of affordable housing in the Bay Area. They've got an excellent reputation. They are working for Stevenson House as a consultant. They do not have any ownership. The development consultant that I used to work for is a consultant that works at the pleasure and leisure of the Stevenson House Board, which continues to be community-based, continues to be a nonprofit. And really, everything that's happening is about trying to make sure that this asset, as is talked about, is maintained in first-class condition for the next 40 years, and that Stevenson House, who is spending several hundred thousand dollars a year providing services, actually has the wherewithal to be able to continue to provide those services. So that being said, just real quickly, I've spent 25 years of my career building affordable housing, 20 of those with a nonprofit called Bridge Housing Corporation, who's built in this city. I'm a 22-year resident of Palo Alto, and I'm really here as a resource. If you do have questions about tax credits, if you have questions about the financing, I'm here to answer those questions. Also, I'll let you know that Stevenson House also has Isabel Brown, who is with Gulf Harbor Litton, their attorney, who could also answer any questions for you. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much for coming. Jonathan Casey.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor and council members. I'm here representing Litton Gardens, which will be one of the limited partners, the general partners in the partnership. The structure's not unique. We actually have another tax credit property in Oakland, similar in setup that we've worked through. But it's really about, and Lydia said it well, and Patrick said it well, the preservation of housing, how we have to make sure that we are able to continue to maintain these buildings. Probably in a year or so, I'll be back here looking with our, at Litton Gardens and doing something similar. There are not HUD funds to do these sorts of projects anymore. We need other sorts of funds. So we have to create these partnerships, and we have to create these structures to create the for-profit underneath the not-for-profit entities. And that way, we can go out and apply for the tax credits. And the more we do these, the more the nonprofits do. It actually is a better preservation over time as these things grow, because there'll be more, a lot more not-for-profits doing this and getting into having these for-profits underneath and syndicating the tax credits, being able to go out and get additional funds. So part of what we were talking about, about the million dollars, is filling gaps. And we're doing that on a lot of projects where we're looking for dollars to fill in the gaps, so we can do all the plans that are in the project. On a $36 million project, you only get so much tax credits. As Lydia said, there's other experts here that can answer those kind of questions about how you end up dealing with all the numbers and working all that out. We're working on another tax credit project up in Santa Rosa, similar things, where we're working through and finding all those ways to fill those gaps. And tax credits are definitely the way we're having to go with all our development dollars that we're doing now as a not-for-profit. Thank you.
Thanks very much for spending your evening with us. Next speaker is Mark Weiss.
Good evening, Mayor Schmidt, Vice Mayor Schmidt, Mayor for the Day Schmidt, and council members. My name is Mark Weiss. Despite the fact I'm wearing a suit, I am not an attorney and I am not a banker. I'm just an average Palo Alton who, like Mr. Schmidt said about three hours ago, I occasionally stand up and speak my mind. And as I heard about this case, I was a little concerned. By training, in the last few years, I've worked as a concert promoter and artist manager in music, but truthfully, my dad is 91, my mother is turning 84 this week, and for the last six years, I've spent more time following the issues of the elderly in my own family than I have on my, on music clients. And I'm 51, and gosh, this is the first time I've ever said anything like this, but gosh, I would aspire to live at the Stevenson House in 10 or 15 years if I became eligible. I rent right now. And I'm not, I don't want to be an obstruction to their plans of the board and the previous speakers, but I am, I did take a tour from a resident. I am a little concerned. I'm concerned about this sort of peculiar nature of the for-profit entity managing the nonprofit entity, it seems a little bit, kind of reminds me of a George Carlin joke, and it's too bad Karen's not here, because she made a, Mayor Holman made a George Carlin reference at the retreat. He talked about jumbo shrimp and the oxymoron of a jumbo shrimp. Are they very large shrimp, or are they shrimpy jumbos? It's funnier when George Carlin says it, maybe it's funnier in the 70s, but not to be too frivolous, but some of the nature of the lit, lititec, or litsea as it's called, I find that curious. I know it's, if I do my research, it is a $6 billion industry to provide low-income tax credit housing. I just, not, the staff report or the city manager report seemed a little bit lacking in the discussion of that element, and I do appreciate that, I think Mr. Councilmember DuBois had sent some questions, and Attorney Silva had addressed some of that in the supplemental material. I wanted to know briefly, you know, what is the history of lititec in Palo Alto? What is the history anywhere of lititec for seniors? What are comparable lititec in San Francisco? And I think the previous speaker addressed that. I also thought it was, I wanted to point out, though, that the staff report says the building was built in 68 and now needs rehabilitation, where actually there are nine separate allocations, including five that are in the supplemental material. I think totaling something like $1.4 million that we've been helping Stevenson all along. It's not just this caught up to them all of a sudden. And just the nature of the litsees is that, it's not that they're trying to find someone who pays taxes, it looks like they are forming an entity to avoid paying taxes. I just find this is troubling enough and peculiar enough and arcane enough. Reminds me a little bit of the Maybell discussion. And so I do appreciate that we're taking the time to give it a little more thorough vetting, and other than that, I wish continued health to the organization. And I think my understanding of the litsees is that they do have a sunset clause, and so I'm worried that going down the line, will it stay affordable housing for seniors?
Good, thank you very much. Sylvia Carl.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. I am Sylvia Carl, Senior Director of Affordable Housing with Episcopal Senior Communities. Litton Gardens is our affordable housing entity of our company. We are a nonprofit. We currently house over 800 low-income seniors in six affordable housing communities. Our largest community being Litton Gardens, which is here in Palo Alto. It is a very unique housing property and site, as we, it is a low-income CCRC, Continuing Care Retirement Community. We offer 370 low-income residents housing in, for independent and assisted levels. We also have Webster House, which is a skilled nursing facility, also for low-income seniors. Our partnership with Stevenson House is one that we are very similar in that our missions are to serve low-income seniors and for the affordability of housing, which is very much needed, as we heard often tonight. Our roles are, you know, when it is time to refinance, tax credits really are the way to go, that really bring together partners in that for the program, you have to have more than three low-income tax projects that you manage, or else you do need to partner with another company to ensure that you have the experience to run a property of this. With the low-income tax credits being refinanced as a HUD property, there are just different, many layers that actually ensure accountability. And I think that's probably one And, and I think that's probably one of the biggest parts to this, is that, you know, with the low income and with enterprise and with the different partners in this, it's more for accountability to ensure that the property is being managed as it's supposed to be, and that the residents' rents are, are being provided at the levels that they should be, and working out the calculations correctly. So, you know, again, Lydia Tan is here to answer any questions, but just wanted to share our relationship and explain who Litton Gardens is, which is a part of Episcopal Senior Communities, a nonprofit housing company for seniors. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for coming. Next speaker is Herb Barak.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Schmidt and council members. I have, I guess, three concerns, because, I guess, that are not, not clear to me. Some of the speakers were talking as if they had the tax credits already, but others it sounded like that's something that can only have in the future, because you would need the council's action to have a valid application. The reason I bring that up is because in the Maybell situation, there seemed to have been application filed with the support of city staff that did not have accurate things in it. So that's my first concern. The second is, the speakers have continually referred to this as affordable housing, but not whether it would stay the same type of housing. For example, Litton Gardens, there, there are three levels of care. As I understand, Stevenson House is essentially independent living, and there was some concern expressed in some comments on Palo Alto online of it being changed into an assisted care living arrangement, which is a different population. The third thing is the advice that you've received from staff in the planning department and the city attorney's office, that to try and interpret the words in the Planned Community Zone Ordinance, when in fact, the appropriate thing to do, if you think they're the wrong words, is to change the words by amending the ordinance. And that, that's a difference to me between advocacy, that is, trying to give you a response to assume that that's the answer that you want, or that that supports what staff's proposal is, versus what I would call an objective advice to council, where it doesn't matter which way individual council members are going to vote, or which way a majority may want to vote. But if the words in the ordinance do not satisfy the need of the applicant, then the proper thing to do is to amend the ordinance, and that's the advice that you should have received. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Tim Gray.
Vice Mayor, City Council. I'm, I came tonight not to speak, but to just address some concerns of neighbors who had heard of this topic. And I know that a not-for-profit can serve the needs of private citizens and be used or misuse, and a for-profit can have a great charitable purpose. So I wouldn't worry so much about the tax-exempt status if it allows some great taking from the federal government to the needs of our local community members. So I wouldn't get hung up on, on labels. But at the same time, there is some concern that, and maybe the board members and the city attorney, and, and we could all get satisfied, that there isn't some clause that's going to interrupt the continuity of the, the use of the land in the long term being dedicated for low-income senior housing. And the definition of affordable would concern me, in that, does affordable mean that we're going to spibby up this property to the benefit of the operators and then have to charge more rent and not include some of the more needy in our community? So if we could just do a little bit more look at the funds flow and get those assurances, I think the community could go forward. But we really do want to preserve this property and not have some private taking through some switch of a contract 20 years down, down the road.
Great. Thank you. Next speaker, Phyllis Castle, to be followed by Ted Marston.
I'm Phyllis Castle, and thank you for hearing us this evening. And I am the immediate past president at Stevenson House, and I'm chair of the Rehabilitation Task Force. I can define independent living for you in the sense that it's not assisted living. You must be able to live on your own and be able to, if you need assistance, like you do in your own home, you have to contract for that. The senior housing will not be contracting with it for you. We may have services that will help you contract it, but we are not assisted living, and we don't provide assisted living services. And we will not. We don't have space to do that in our space. Isn't physically possible. We started with this project because we are having problems with our sewers. They're 50 years old. I don't know about your house, but mine houses had problems. We had a CBDG loan from the city for half a million dollars, and it repaired half of the sewer line in one building, and we have three buildings. So you aren't going to give me a half a million dollars in CBDG loans very often, so we were not going to be able to do the work. Once we decided to do an assessment of what needed to be done, that meant we had to look at earthquake issues. And once you look at earthquake issues, and you have a building like Stevenson House, you must fix that, and now you're talking several million dollars. There's no way out of our operating funds we could handle that, and therefore, we had to go to a much more complex process. Affordable means 80% or less of the median income. We will be serving low, very low, and I want to say severely low, it's another term that's as bad, extremely low-income people, and we have very specific guidelines that we have to follow with it. We have six, we will have six agreements with six different people, at least, that will say we have to be low-income on into the future. And I can't remember all of them. Some get over at 15 years, and some at 20, and some at 25, and some at 50, and one other one at 85. We've been doing this for 50 years. There is no reason to believe that Stevenson House will not be low-income long into the future and far beyond our loans. There was a question that Pat and Bert asked, and I hope you'll give me more than a second here, about why did our staffing change suddenly? We changed because Jon Stewart Company was required or someone equivalent. We had to make that change last fall. The decision was made last fall. The transfer happened later on. We had a sudden loss of staff. As you know, we cannot discuss with you in public why that sudden loss of staff happened, because if we did, we could be sued. The employer can't say anything. The employee can say what they please. And all I can tell you is it was urgent. It had to happen. It was very unfortunate, and we're very sad that it happened. It was not planned. It was expected that those employees would be staying with us, and we needed that, we needed to make the change. I wash dishes. I didn't know I could still wash commercial dishes in a commercial kitchen.
Good. If I could have one council member ask a question?
Yes, Phyllis. Thanks for that part of the clarification. It's been in the press reports and, and letters from residents that not only were there these staff changes, but that prior staff members who were kept on were at reduced earnings and loss of benefits.
We worked very hard not to have that happen. I haven't checked the last, about everything, but one of the reasons the turnover took so long was because we wanted to make sure that they kept those benefits. We were paying benefits anyway. Why not keep paying benefits? We ran into some weird problems whereby the people were being terminated from Stevenson House and hired by Jon Stewart through Kelly. And in the process, usually what happens when they pick up a little entity like ours is that the benefits are lousy. It turned out that our benefits weren't lousy. They're about the same as Jon Stewart's. So we had to find a way to bridge that, and it's taken a while. And that's been our goal, to provide that through that interim period.
So it's your intent that the employees who are retained will have comparable benefits to what they had in the past?
That's correct.
So when this comes back to us in April, you would be able to demonstrate that?
I presume so. I just didn't have to pick that information up tonight amongst everything else we were getting ready for you. But we have worked very hard to do that, to keep it comparable. We are paying, you know, we were paying for it before. What difference did it make? We pay for it anyway. We have a contract for management, but we, you know, we're going to be paying for all of those services. And we intend to keep up the services that were handled before, just the way we have. We've been subsidizing those services now, asking for grants from the community, donations and other things to cover those expenses.
Then one other question. It will remain affordable housing, but will it be the same type of affordable and same mix? Is anything changing in that regard?
Yes, we'll be covering lower-income housing, lower-income individuals rather than higher-income individuals. Tax credit program is such that new people who move in can only be at 50% of the median income. So while now we've been providing housing for people at 80% and 60%, we will, it'll be reduced for new people once the program starts to 50%. So it's going to be very, very low-income people. And we already have a significant number of very low-income people.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hi. Thanks very much, Ms. Castle. I think at least the recent, several of us were interested, was we saw, you know, there was some feedback and what we read in the paper and so forth, and it appeared that, and I know you can't talk about this too much, but it appeared to us that the introduction of the for-profit management company, which we all understand why, and what appeared to be an aggressive cost-cutting regimen, appeared to happen basically simultaneously, and that's where everybody here sort of sat up and said, wait, wait, let's ask what's going on here. So are you saying that the management change action, if you can say, was not actually an aggressive cost-cutting regimen, but was for some other reason?
It was for some other reason. I can say that.
All right. Thanks very much.
No, no. There was no intent as a cost-cutting method. Eventually, we will have less staff, simply because the rehab will be done, and all the work that's going into the rehab will mean that we need less staff. We're going to need staff the way Litton Gardens needs staff, and other nonprofits need staff. We have more than that right now. But for the moment, there was no intent to cut it. We need the number of people we have in maintenance, because our building's old, and, you know, today, the, the elevator went out, and sewer went out 10 days ago, and the electric box had sparks in it, and, you know, it just goes on and on and on. We've got to get this rehab done, or this building is in danger.
Good. Thank you very much. Last speaker, Ted Marston. Next to last speaker.
Mr. Vice Mayor, council members, thank you very much. Ted Marston, I've lived in Palo Alto almost 40 years, and to be honest with you, until two years ago, I'd never heard of Stevenson House. And when I was looking for what to do when I retired, I'm a member of Rotary, we had a number of Rotarians that worked at Stevenson House, and Tom Pamela, who was the executive director, recruited me. So I feel very strongly for the charter of Stevenson House. I'm actually the treasurer, and one of the things we have to do is we're writing investment policy statements and gift acceptance policies now, so we can get the money, provide the services that the residents are used to. We want to continue the meals program, but that's not mandatory under the new rules. So we have to be able to get the resources to provide the meals for the seniors. And that's an incredibly important thing for socialization. It was interesting, we had, we had a meeting with the residents today, and they were, they were actually complimenting this quote-unquote "for-profit" organization, because they got their checks into the bank within three days, they got maintenance requests done in hours rather than days. So there was a lot of positive feedback. Jon Stewart Company runs 33,000 units, so they know how to do it. Our interest from the board is that they do that part of the business, but we want to add on top of that to keep the residents as happy and as content as they have been, and will be for the next several decades, maybe four decades, long, long after I die. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for everyone who came and spent time to share their views. Back to the council, are there any?
Did you have one more speaker?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Stephanie Munoz. Sorry.
Good evening, council members. You know me. I'm Stephanie Munoz. And I know very little about Stevenson House, except that it's important to this community. It's important to me. I know that university, that universal, the Unitarian Universal Church donated that land, or not quite donated it, but gave it at a very, very steeply discounted price many years ago. And that should, that, that should have given them the, the basis for sound financial continuance. I know that the food program is the same as the Avenidas and the Senior Center in Mountain View. That is, it's a partially federal subsidized program, and a far partially subsidized also, I believe, by the city or some other entity. And that should not be, there shouldn't be any contingency there. I have great worry and doubt whenever a for-profit agency comes and takes over a nonprofit, because they're in business to make a profit. How are they going to make a profit? Why are they taking on something to make a profit if it's losing money? And I think you're going to, I really appreciate Councilmember Bert's questions, especially and Councilmember Phil's. And I think you need a lot more questions of all the people that have volunteered somebody. This lady that was here, this Peggy, she seemed to be very knowledgeable, and that sounded great. And then there's Herb. And I think somehow or other, you should find out the answers that satisfy this lady here that's a resident. And I think you just need to ask more before you make any decisions. Thanks very much.
Great. Thank you. That brings it back to council. And are there any council members who have not spoken who have questions or comments? Let me make my response to everything we've heard. I think it's clear that Stevenson House is important to Palo Alto and very important to the council. Low-income senior housing is a, is a valuable thing in the city, and there's a high level of concern about its health and, and future. It is very nice to find out that the IRS is willing to give up some of their money to build affordable senior housing, and we should see that as a benefit. You know, unfortunately, what that means, though, is you have to have someone who can take the IRS tax credits, which mean a for-profit firm. And what was striking about this is we read that 99.9% of the effective control is in the hands of a for-profit under this legal system. And that, you know, stopped us, especially when we found that the ordinance we have does not have the word "low income" in it. Now, I do note that you sent out today this 2009 agreement in which the city does have a clause that says, "The property shall be used solely for the operation of senior rental housing, subject to affordability requirements." 50 units will be extremely low-income, 50 will be moderate, no, extremely low, low-income, and 20 will be low-income. So I think that's the wording we're looking for. But the 2009 agreement just... But the 2009 agreement just is on the loan. And so the key question for the council is, when do we provide oversight? This is probably the first time in decades that the city council has the opportunity to ask questions and be assured that everything is in order. So it becomes a very important moment. As I step back and look, what is our continuing oversight? The only thing I can find in the structure of the organizations is that Litten Gardens will now be a part of the general partnership. And under their deed of trust, they have agreed to have a city council member as a liaison to their board. So the city council has an ear and a voice at the Litten Gardens Board, which has some impact now on Stevenson House. But that is the only continuing relationship between the city, the city council, and these organizations. And it's a distant one. So I think that's why it was significant tonight to spend some time to reassure us on things, to send the supplemental information, and to say that when the million-dollar request comes up, we'll have a chance to look at other things. So with that, I see no more lights. Eric.
Since you mentioned that. Question of staff. Most of the discussion about how we ensure that the property continues to be affordable housing well into the future, a lot of this has revolved around the loan that's going to come to us in April. I think, I mean, clearly, the board of Pashi is comfortable with the Jon Stewart Company, and so that's good, right? But, you know, 10 years from now, there will be different people on the board, different people at Jon Stewart Company and so forth. And it's incumbent on us to make sure we've sort of been careful here. They're going to do a $36 million renovation, and we're going to pay $1 million for that, right? Suppose they decide they don't need the $1 million? Is the property still constrained to be low-income, affordable senior housing decades into the future if we mutually decide the $1 million loan is not the way to go?
Yes, oh, absolutely. There are, as we mentioned, several levels of deed restrictions. So there is the HUD tax credit, there's also the county loan, and there are, there's the city $1 million loan, and then the city also has some outstanding CDBG loans. And I think that we have given CDBG funding over the years, and there may be, you know, need for that in the future as well. So there will be additional opportunities for city deed restrictions in the future.
Is there a motion? Councilmember DuBois.
Sides, I'd like to clarify, you know, do we need a motion? You were suggesting maybe that we direct staff to clarify in the letter that Stevenson House will remain affordable housing. Should we make that motion? It's a little bit confusing. You're kind of saying that it's already there, from what I'm hearing.
I think the lenders are interested in the city affirming our understanding of what the PC ordinance allows as a permitted use. So we would like the councils, a council motion supporting us executing this letter indicating that it's appropriate.
All right, so I'll make a motion. Council directs staff to work with the applicant on the letter regarding zoning compliance to clarify that Stevenson House must remain affordable senior housing for the change to the site-specific plan, community zoning ordinance to remain in effect. Does that sound sufficient?
Do you want to speak further?
No.
Councilmember Woback? Any other comments? Councilmember Burt?
Yeah, I just wanted to have one final visit on this question of why we wouldn't change the PC ordinance to not have this kind of ambiguous, at best, interpretation. Why wouldn't we just want to, how much work would it be to change the PC ordinance to reflect this language and just be clear?
So typically, in Palo Alto, what we've done with PC ordinances is to entitle a particular project. So it's a little different than a zoning ordinance that you would expect to see for, you know, other types of projects. And so I think that the intent behind this whole PC ordinance for the Stevens House was really designed to entitle the particular project which had some affordable, which had affordable housing. And so we viewed the council's action tonight as very consistent with that overall PC. Certainly, you could initiate a zone change amendment. I think that with PCs, the council, since they're generally applicant-initiated, you know, it might be better for the applicant to initiate that if they felt that there was some need for additional, you know, comfort in the future or security on the affordability in the future. It certainly would be a time resource for the staff to go through, you know, the outreach and going through the planning commission and city council to enact an amendment.
So it couldn't merely return to council on that? Okay. So I understand your explanation about the greater discretion that we have because it's a PC ordinance. Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Scharf?
So what I understood this to be was a lender requirement to get the loan. And when I've ever seen these commercial loans in my practice, the lender wants a particular statement, and I'm just asking staff, I mean, this, the motion does not match the staff recommendation by a long shot. What I believe the lender was looking for, from what I heard, was, that's what I'm asking, is that staff recommend the city council find the Stevens House property will be in compliance with its existing zoning under the proposed financing and ownership structure. And I thought that's what we were asked to do today, was to provide that assurance to the lender. This motion doesn't do that. So I have no problem with the motion, except for we don't seem to be doing what the lender asked, and so they may not get the financing. So that's really my question, is do we need to add this in and say, you know, the council also finds that the Stevenson House property at 455 East Charleston Road will be in compliance with the existing zoning under the proposed financing and ownership structure described in the report? So I assume we want them to get the loan. Do we need to say that?
Councilmember Scharf, maybe I can ask a question in return. I guess I was thinking that the concluding statement on packet page 334 is fairly consistent with the motion that Councilmember DuBois has offered, and that we would just have to insert the word "affordable." So it would say, "Based on the facts stated above, the city confirms that the leasing of the property to PASHPI Stevenson House LP, in which an affiliate, da-da-da-da, and continued operation of the project as senior affordable housing is consistent with the PC zoning of the property." I think that would get, would comply with the motion that's on the?
If the lender's going to be fine with that, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't walking out of here not done the thing that we wanted to do, which was to make the loan available. And, you know, I mean, I don't quite read it the way you read it, but if the lender's going to be fine with that, I don't care. The question is, is the lender going to be fine with it?
This, our understanding is that the lender would be fine with this letter that was provided in the packet. So with the change that I just read, we were adding one word, so it says, "Continued operation of the project as senior affordable housing is consistent with the PC ordinance."
And I just wanted to ask, Tom, that's fine if they just do that?
Yes.
Okay. Then I'm all good.
Does the board want to make a statement?
Can I just, you want me to open the mic or?
Yes.
What if they foreclose? And I didn't call, I didn't even say my name. Again, my name is Patrick Regan, and we are looking for financing. We're under a deadline. We've been under this project for three years. And the thing is, is that what I'd like to assure the board is, is that, and I think there was an issue of for-profit, that for-profit, the limited partnership, that 99% ownership is for-for-profit, that's the tax credit investor. They are a limited partner. They do not have any management say in the operation outside of that we meet our financial obligations to pay the loan and that we keep, you know, that we have certain financial ones. But we will still be, Pashki or Stevenson House, as you know, will still be effectively the management, managing the property. We hire Jon Stewart and Company as a property manager. That is a finite agreement for a period of time. We are not satisfied. I know, I appreciate the control that you guys want to have, but I think you have to have some faith in us as well, and that if, and clearly, I can tell you, if my board back there, or our board, does not like the way Jon Stewart and Company is managing the property, we will have something to say about that. And we have control. And I talk about control as that we're doing this very, very, you know, there's only one asset that we have that we're looking after, and it's very important to us that the residents are well taken care of.
Okay. One key question, though, the letter that is on packet page 333, 334, with that one-word insert.
I would have, I'm going to ask Lydia to answer.
Okay.
Thanks. I just, I was just consulting with our attorney. So the tax credit investor, just as a Councilmember Scharf's question, has read the letter the way it showed up in the council packet without the word "affordable inserted"? They have approved that verbatim. I'd be concerned if we changed it, we'd have to go back to the investor and ask for a change, and ask for approval to change. If it pleased the council, I'd like to just suggest that the letter stayed the way it was in the packet, and it get considered that way.
That then does not address Councilmember DuBois's?
If I can interject, Councilmember Schmidt, or Vice Mayor Schmidt, I guess, I guess with that said, the assurance that this is an affordable project will come with the regulatory agreements that you'll see with the, when the loan comes forward, in addition to the existing agreements that are explained in the message from Kara Silver earlier today.
Would that be satisfactory?
Well, so I guess that means we withdraw the motion essentially, right? That means we're withdrawing the motion?
Unless somebody wants to offer a friendly amendment.
Right. So am I understanding correctly that this letter has already gone through? Is that why it can't be changed?
Just a point of fact, that the letter was reviewed by the investors' council exactly as it's been presented, and so any change, we would have to go back and get approval. The other thing I would just say is that this letter and the interpretation of zoning really isn't operable unless we use low-income housing tax credits. And with tax credits comes a 55-year regulatory agreement, so you really can't do one without the other. Just a point, just a point of fact there for you.
Okay. So I'll withdraw the motion then.
So moved, accepted as a friendly amendment. So I'll move that we do the staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay. Any comments on that? Okay. If you want to vote on the board. That does pass unanimously, and thank you for staff and for everyone who came for helping us through the evening.
Mr. Mayor, as OMB Director Walter Rossman comes up to the table, I would just remind the council, there was in that place's memorandum that corrects two of the expenditure tables in the general long-range, general fund long-range financial forecast. And that just pointed out that inadvertently, employees paid leave and assumed vacancy savings were categorized as a benefit versus a salary expense. And I'll turn it over to Walter and his team.
Director Rossman.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Mayor Schmidt and honorable council members. First, we'd like to do staff with you on the table, Joe Saty, Assistant Director of Finance, as well as Christine Paras, who works in the Budget Office as a Principal Management As you know, the financial, the development release of the general fund long-range financial forecast marks the beginning of the fiscal year 2016 budget process. Today, I will discuss the short- and long-term financial outlook for the next 10 years and focus on the major revenue and expenditure projections. Before I start diving into the results of the forecast based on the model discussed with the Finance Committee during the last few years, we need to ask ourselves what the picture-perfect financial outlook looks like. Ideally, in a picture-perfect world, every year, the city is able to afford its current service level, that means the same amount of library hours, police services, or fire and ambulance staffing, and generate a slight ongoing surplus as shown in this graph. Now, how are we doing? This graph shows the annual surpluses and deficits as projected during the next 10 years. For fiscal 2016, at the time of the development of the forecast model, in fall, we projected a slight surplus of $0.5 million. For fiscal 2017, primarily due to a reduction of the utility user tax revenue estimates related to the ongoing drought, the model predicts a slight shortfall. Thereafter, we project annual surplus between $1 million and $3.4 million. As I said, the blue line depicts the annual surpluses and shortfalls. However, typically, as part of the annual budget process, the city spends the surplus in response to new service needs. These new service needs have an ongoing budget impact. For example, if you look at fiscal 2020, the blue line dips and starts rising again with fiscal 2023. Therefore, just focusing on the blue line does not present the entire picture. Rather, we need to analyze the year-over-year change of annual surpluses as they're spent and deficits as they're resolved. The red line shows the year-over-year change of annual surpluses and deficits. For example, looking at fiscal 2020, as the annual surpluses decrease, the red line dips dramatically and will predict shortfalls for two years. Overlaying now picture-perfect notion with the green arrow, over the next 10 years, we're heading in the right direction. And on the way, we need to make sure that we continue our prudent approach to budgeting while addressing the most important needs of our organization and ensure that we continue to provide outstanding services to our residents. As the council is quite aware, with every model, there is a significant number of known unknowns. This slide identifies all known unknowns noted in the report before you. I highlight the most important ones, and will address those today. The city is currently labor negotiations with our two public safety unions and the utility management union, and the contract for SEIU, the largest union, is expiring next fiscal year in December of this calendar year. The outcome of these discussions may impact the long-term financial outlook. Our staff is working actively with Stanford to develop a successor contract for fire, providing fire services to the campus. The current contract is scheduled to end early October, based on Stanford's termination letter from two years ago. The council also approved the infrastructure plan in June 2014 in the amount of $126 million. At the time of approval, the plan was adopted with a funding gap of $7.5 million. This forecast assumes, as part of the fiscal 2016 budget, the entire gap will be closed. However, no funds are set aside today for potential higher costs due to land acquisition or construction costs as designs are finalized. And finally, the last valuations for the city's pension and retiree healthcare plans identify total unfunded liabilities of $439 million. Recommendation tonight for this report includes a referral to the Finance Committee to discuss these unfunded liabilities and for staff to present potential strategies to address Now that we've focused on the overall model of the forecast and shared the results with you, allow me to shift my presentation to revenue and expenditure projections. This first slide compares non-tax revenues with tax revenues during the forecast period. During this period, non-tax revenues are steadily increasing while tax revenue growth is growing at a faster pace, excuse me. In 2016, tax revenues present 56% of all revenues. By 2025, the same tax By 2025, the same tax revenues will comprise about 60% of all revenues. So by the end of the forecast period, tax revenues are projected to have a bigger share of all revenues. Since tax revenues signify the largest share of all revenues, I would like to discuss and focus the discussion a little bit more on the subset of these tax revenues. To give you a long-term perspective, I quickly wanted to regress to about 10 years ago. In 2005, sales tax receipts comprised the largest share of all tax revenues at 30%, and property tax receipts were the second-largest share at 28%. By 2016, just next year, as identified in the forecast, sales tax and property tax shifted positions for two primary reasons. First, starting with fiscal 2015, the former revenue stream for motor vehicle licenses fees was shifted over three years to property tax. Second, property tax revenue receipts have increased faster than sales tax receipts during the last 11 years. Next year, it is expected that property tax receipts comprise about 1/3 of all tax revenues. Also, due to the recent voter-approved tax rate increase, the transient occupancy tax represents a larger share of all tax revenues as before. Looking forward 10 years, property tax is projected to have an even larger share of tax revenues. This is primarily due to the forecast model, which takes 20 years of actual revenue receipts into consideration and projects it forward. As part of this historical analysis, property tax are projected to increase faster than the two other major tax revenues. Now turning to expenditures, salary benefits comprise about 2/3 of annual expenditures. The forecast assumes an annual 2% salary increase for planning purposes only, as shown with the blue parts of the stacked graph. As you can see, we expect the pension, medical, and retiree healthcare costs to rise substantially faster than salaries. Therefore, we need to continue working with our bargaining groups to reduce the cost escalation for benefits costs. It is important to note, though, that, to recognize that we have come to successful agreements with our bargaining groups to establish a tiered pension system, most of our employees paying the employee pension costs, and capping of annual healthcare increases for most bargaining units. As a result, we've been able to contain today's costs, and we have to continue to work to contain future costs. In summary, over the next 10 years, we are projecting a positive fiscal outlook. As in years past, we need to continue our prudent fiscal approach to budgeting, work with our bargaining units to contain benefits costs, and develop strategies to reduce our unfunded liabilities. As mentioned, we are facing quite a few unknowns. We'll keep the council informed as we learn more. Therefore, I recommend that the council accepts this report and refer the city's unfunded pension, retiree, healthcare liabilities to the Finance Committee for strategic discussion.
Let's see, the chairman of the Finance Committee was Mark Berman when this was approved and recommended. Mark, do you want to give a statement?
Thank you, Acting Mayor. A quick statement, you know, we, the presentation pretty much gave the summary and lays out a pretty clear picture of where we've been and where things are going, and I thought the pie graph comparisons to 2005 and 2000, projections for 2025 were really helpful, which I don't think we got it at Finance Committee.
No, you did not.
But, but I appreciated getting, getting here. The one, I think normally this would have gone on consent, if I recall, but the one item that was, was different from previous years was asking council to refer to finance, to the Finance Committee, different ways to analyze addressing our pension and healthcare liabilities. And so that was the, the real reason why this came on action instead of on consent, as we assumed colleagues would want to weigh in on that. I know that part of the motion was recommended by Councilmember Burt, so, or was made by Councilmember Burt, so I'll let him dive into, you know, the, his thoughts on the matter, and then council can have a conversation about it.
Good. Councilmember Burt, do you want to?
Well, it's simply that that is a huge, long-term liability. We're not alone in this, but we certainly have a very large number for our city, and how we begin to whittle that down is going to be one of our most important long-term decisions. So we wanted to begin that process of, of determining whether we should attempt to build that into our long-range financial planning to reduce it over time. And we wanted to have council input on whether that was appropriate and, and receive that guidance. So I, if that's the case, then now I look for the, the current Finance Committee to tackle that tough question. And if I may ask, I had one question for staff. Can you remind me, on council page, packet page 376, we have the growth in property tax revenue, and I, in my head, it looks like we are just under 6%, maybe 5.5% per year is our projection. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so we view, is it 5.5% or 6% or something?
I'm sorry, recently?
Is it 5.5% or 6% or what, do you know what percentage increase per year we're using?
I, we use the compound annual growth rate for this, and so, you know, I, the 5.6% is roughly the average.
5.6%, you're saying?
Yes.
I see. Okay. And so that's what we've had historically?
That's right.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Other council questions or comments? Councilmember Sharf?
So I was a little confused, and when the ARC comes to us for, for funding, I always thought we fully funded our ARC. So we're obviously not fully funding our ARC. So how does, so what are we doing?
Sure. So the annual required contribution for pension, what we did, we fully funded the way the budget is set up. The only thing which happens on the pension side is it is based on a rate of payroll. So as we generate payroll every two weeks, and we have some vacancies, we actually, at the end of the year, we're actually not fully paying it. So one is a recommendation that we plan to bring forward to you as part of 16 proposed budget to make sure we fully pay the ARC every year. So we're changing the way we're doing this.
So I'm still confused, because it says we have $143.6 million unfunded liability for healthcare, right? Am I missing that?
Do you mind which package page?
So I'm looking at page 354. All right, I mean, I, simply put, it seemed like pensions were $295.5 million in unfunded liability, and then healthcare plan in the amount of $143.6.
That's correct.
And I simply, for some reason, I, it's obviously wrong, this is where the disconnect for me is, I thought every year you came to us and you told us we were fully funding our ARC. And I thought the ARC was the healthcare, you know, retire, was the retiree healthcare.
So what does the ARC mean? The annual required contribution means over 30-year period, if we paid the ARC every year, we will pay off the unfunded liability. So every year, you're in essence chipping away on your principal, on the ongoing normal costs which you have for the existing employees and the retirees, as well as the principal payment chipping away on that, so by the time 30 years is over, we will have paid everything off. Now, the issue which happens every two years on the health, retiree healthcare process, we have a new valuation, and that takes interest income into account, new demographic situation, so it changes every two years. On the pension side, it changes annually.
So I thought we had this discussion with our consultant, where the question was, was to do it like a mortgage, where you value it as 30 years, and then you pay it off. And we were doing it where it's the equivalent of refinancing every year and doing another 30 years.
That's correct.
Right? So are we still doing the equivalent of the refinancing, or do we have a closed end 30 years?
We have a closed amortization.
See, that's what I thought. I thought we'd moved to that.
That's correct.
So if we have a closed amortization, why is it a problem that we have $143.6 million unfunded liability? Because aren't we in effect paying it off on a 30-year basis?
So, so that is correct. Everything being equal, we would be paying off in 30 years. However, what is happening, though, is we have our retirees and existing employees, active employees, living longer, so that's a change we just made last year with the valuation. So we have constantly changing variables, which has extended, has increased the cost of the unfunded liability. So obviously, what we could do as an option is do nothing, pay the ARC every year, and as it gets restated annually or every two years, make sure we pay it off. Okay? So again, the idea is in 30 years, it will be done.
Right. So if we're doing that, why, I mean?
What's the benefit of paying sooner?
Yeah. I mean, to some extent, I mean, to some extent, we have a plan to pay it off. It doesn't seem like there's any reason not to, I mean, continue that. Most cities, from what I understand, to put it in context, actually don't fully pay their ARC.
Sure.
And we're one of the few cities that does, and, you know, we have the AAA bond rating and do all that. So I guess that's where I'm getting to, is what's the value in putting more money aside to pay this off faster than 30 years?
Sure. The benefit of paying it off sooner is you pay on your outstanding liability less interest rate.
Okay.
It's really, it's a simple answer.
So what is the interest rate?
Well, it's, it's based on the 7.5% investment earnings, which is assumed in the plan. So of the unfunded liability, this gets factored in by the actuaries, and that's how it gets calculated over 30 years. So if you reduce that unfunded liability sooner, your annual payment will go down over 30 years, everything being equal, and therefore, you pay less of this, you have less interest payments in essence.
Now, we have no such thing as the ARC that I can recall for the pension liability. Or do we? I mean, is there?
That's the $239 million.
Yeah.
And that's for both the safety plan and the miscellaneous plan.
Right. So I don't recall you coming to us and saying, "Get fully fund that." I don't recall that. So I assume we don't do that. So do we have a plan for that at all?
A plan, Councilmember Sharf, a plan for what?
So if we do nothing on this, on the?
So right now, we have no plans per se, except paying the annual required contribution, but we would like to explore with the Finance Committee, per direction of the Finance Committee and the council, what are options to do so? And just on top of my head, there's several options you can make. You can fully pay the ARC every year, and then ways of prepaying it annually upfront. So instead of paying it based on payroll, you actually pay the full amount upfront, you're done. Has some savings for the, for the, for the city, because you get the earnings through CalPERS or the retiree healthcare plan at 7.5% interest for our interest rate that the current is about 2.2, 2.3?
A little less.
A little less. Okay. So that's one advantage. The second thing is you want to take one-time payments, as we have budget surpluses for the future, and pay those down, to pay down the unfunded liability. And the third thing really is, is to reduce headcount. If we have less people on staff, active employees, we have less liabilities generating every year. And there are probably other solutions out there, but we need to explore those.
Okay. And the plan is to come to Finance Committee, and we'll talk about those.
That is correct.
The next thing, I was just a little confused as to why we had the dip in 2017 on that chart.
Sure. That is primarily the way we project forward utility user tax. So there's two issues there. We lowered the rates, we lowered the rate on the telephone tax through the voter approval, so once this gets implemented. And the second thing is for, we had lower water and gas consumption, which we talked about at the mid-year report, and that had an impact on the tax, and we probably, and we're looking, we're thinking this pattern of lower gas consumption due to, and water consumption will continue.
So it'll continue, right? So then what's picking it back up the following year?
It's other tax revenues as well.
All right. Got it. Thanks.
Councilmember Phil, I'm sorry.
Probably just getting too late, I shouldn't say this, but one of the nice things about the 10-year long-range financial forecasts is we'll be able to revisit these unfunded liability issues every single year over the next 10 years at a minimum going forward.
Someone else will, you mean? Councilmember Philson.
Yeah. So I, I think, I very much appreciate the, the staff doing this. I think your suggestion that the Finance Committee take a look at the unfunded pension and health liability is a very, very good one. You know, having taken a swag at trying to figure some of this stuff out in the fall, it looked to me like the size of our surplus or non-surplus was pretty sensitive to the assumption of CalPERS interest rate returns, whether it really was 7.5%. And even small variations in that made a big difference. So I, I think, yeah, I think it's, it's highly appropriate, the Finance Committee go look at this some more.
I did have one question, which had to do with the, the infrastructure project, which is $126.8 million. And there's a charge in, it says there's going to be an additional transfer of $4.7 million a year to the capital fund, and, and that's the, that's the debt service cost?
Sure. Sure. Let me explain that. So as part of the infrastructure plan, the council approved that that service will be issued, that will be issued in the annual debt service cost for the next 30 years? I'm looking at you. 30 years is $4.7 million. Now, we haven't issued any debt yet, but the tax is collected, so we're proposing, as part of 16, to use the money to fill the gap, which we have.
Yeah. Sorry, my question is going to be really simple, which is, am I calculating this right? That 4.7 over 126.8 is, is like 3.34% interest? Is that, is that what we're going to pay roughly?
So that 4.7, when it gets leveraged for debt, will support, I think it's like $57 million, 4.7 times 14 is, is the number, so five, it's almost $70 million.
Okay.
So that's, that's why we have that in there, that will be in the annual amount of debt service for when we, you know, issue, if we issued $70 million.
So what is the anticipated interest rate?
I'm sorry? The interest rate that I, that we use was, was a little high. It was probably about, either somewhere is 4.75% to 5%. So it's a little conservative on that.
4.75%.
But it depended on when we issued the debt. I mean, rates are not that high for us right now.
Okay. Thanks.
Sure.
See any other lights? Let me ask a couple questions. What we're looking at is our long-term assumptions, where we're going, and you've stated a couple unknowns in there. Let me raise a couple others. You say the Stanford fire thing. I'm concerned about the pension obligations. We do know that the safety group's pensions are very high, and the future liabilities are very high. And I do know that you pay for them. You use the phrase at one point, "Pay as you go." What happens to the pension obligations of the portion of safety that might drop off with Stanford? Is that a Palo Alto obligation, or is that a Stanford obligation?
Well, we have not fully explored that yet with the legal, with the legal department. However, initial explorations are that we're willing to dig deeply into the contract with which we have with Stanford and figure out whether we can actually transfer this obligation to Stanford per the contract. But we have not really dived into this yet.
That could be very tricky, especially if we're not prepaying or paying as you go, that obligation grows over time. Which brings up a second question on pensions. You have assumptions about workers, and you're using a compound, long-term, average growth rate. But I assume that over time, as workers become more productive, we can probably run the city services with fewer workers. And that means that the ratio between existing workers and retired shrinks. Does that change our pension obligations dramatically?
Insofar, well, there's actually several larger issues going on with pension. Number one, we have a three-tier system now. So we have, I believe, as of last fall, about 25% of miscellaneous employees are in tier two or tier three. So you have a shifting with the active employees receiving a less rich pension benefit. Then you have the long-term outlook, we have active employees who are tier three and retirees who still will benefit from the tier, from the tier one, excuse me, benefit the highest one for a long time. So over time, when we asked the actuary to look at this 10, last year, when we will see in our annual required contribution and unfunded liability a change, there's more and more active employees at tier one, tier two.
Yeah.
So, so that will take about 10 years, they're saying.
But I guess I'm concerned that the tier three employees who are getting less benefits will end up paying more to cover the retired.
That's, that's quite a possibility, obviously, given, given that your, your, your initial sort of hypothesis is, is if the ratio does decline of actives to retirees from where it is even today, then obviously that does put more burden on the existing employees to pay for that liability.
So the way, and the one to, what the manager's saying is, what existing employees pay is the normal cost only, they do not pay for the unfunded liability.
Well, the employer will be paying.
We are paying the other part of the normal cost, that is correct. And all the unfunded liability is currently paid by the city, by the employer.
Another long-term issue is, again, you're taking the past compound growth rate, but in our other planning activities, we are in our other planning activities, we are forecasting that jobs will grow faster than they have in the past, and that the number of residents will grow faster than in the past. Now, does that have implications for our long-term forecast? Would it, for example, impact, I don't know, sales tax, property taxes, or something?
So one thing where we have not done yet is actually overlay, once the conference plan direction over the next 15 years, once finalized, into our long-term financial forecast. So council directed us to do this with a separate study, so we'll do that, and I would expect if the study is complete from the consultant, that we'll definitely take that information into account for next year's, our citywide, long-term financial forecast.
Right, I guess the problem is, though, if we use our long-term forecast to inform our decisions on the comp plan, we would be making a mistake.
I think our emphasis is going to be the other way around. I'm not too worried about that.
Just a small issue on the sales tax. Over the last couple of years, we've had a couple of big exceptions, and it shows up in the numbers. First, the construction payments from Stanford, and then this last year, the 13 and 1/2 months. Does that affect the long-term growth and distort the projection into the future of our sales tax revenues?
The recessions are definitely part of it. We've kind of, with the compound annual growth rate was taken after we took both recessions into account, the Great Recession and the dot-com recession as well. The Stanford revenues that you've brought up in terms of construction, they're important revenues, but we will factor those into the future. I think we did make an adjustment that there were some one, those are one-time revenues. Likewise, we've made an adjustment for what the council receives from the auditor's office as a one-time, well, we have the accrual, the council member mentioned the accrual, but we also had from one vendor a bump in revenues, and in the forecast, you'll see the two years are high, and then we go back to a steady state.
So your long-term forecast tries to take into account the one-time effects?
That is right.
Good. Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Is there a motion to accept the report?
We've approved the staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
We're also referring to that.
Yeah, that's part of the recommendation, is that right? Yes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Philson, second by Councilmember Wallback. Any further comments? Let's vote on the vote. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Any councilmember questions, comments, announcements? Councilmember Berman?
So I had the pleasure, along with City Manager Keen, on Saturday afternoon, evening, of attending the inauguration of the new Daudibora Masjid, the mosque, on San Antonio, just, or on, yeah, on San Antonio, just off of 101, across the street from the JCC. And needless to say, the event was way bigger of a deal than I was anticipating. And His Holiness, and I'm going to not pronounce his name correctly, Sayedna Mufadal Sayfuddin, who's kind of the spiritual leader of the Daudibora, which is an Indian Shia, Shia community, flew out from India. He was attending a couple of these inaugurations at different Daudibora mosques in California, and it wasn't a functioning mosque until he arrived and God blessed it and did the inauguration, and then a couple of us got to address him, and it was, it was a scene. I don't know if the city manager has, has any comments, but it was really neat to see just the passion of, you know, our residents, as well as residents from all over the country and the world. People flew out from all over the world to attend this, and it was a really, you know, very kind of spiritual event. So the mosque is now fully functioning, and everybody was really thankful that it's in our community.
Thanks for sharing that. Councilmember Wallback?
A couple of quick things. I alluded to it earlier. I went to a summit on Saturday, it was actually hosted by Transform. I heard a variety of comments and discussions and a couple of breakout sessions about transportation, housing, and health in the region. Transform will be making all of the presentation slides available on their website. I encourage people to take a look, there's some very interesting information from that, and I'd be happy to chat with people about, you know, my notes from that, from that event. And I'd recommend, since it's an annual thing, I'd recommend going in the future. We had a couple of members of the Board of Supervisors were there, and some other elected officials in transportation and health leaders from around the region, so a very productive thing to maybe keep on your calendar for next year. Also, I had the opportunity, I was invited to speak at Gunn High School for Gun Service Day last Thursday, and it was a real treat to go back to my alma mater and send the kids off to a day of public service all around the region.
Good, thank you. Councilmember Scharf?
Just briefly, I had a question for the city manager. We were looking at moving from sense minutes to verbatim minutes, and I was wondering where in the process we are on that.
That's a good question.
I'm tired of voting for these sense minutes. I'm going to start voting no, I've decided.
I'll have to go back and see where we are. We'll send the council an update on that.
Okay, thank you.
You just need four more votes.
Yeah. Beth Minor, acting city clerk, it is coming back, I believe, in May for council.
Thank you.
Okay, I see no other lights, so meeting is adjourned.